Recording in progress.
Mayor and Council, we are live.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Pasadena City Council. The council, why don't we start with the, well, the council did meet in closed session to discuss items, A and B, I'm sorry, A and D. We did not get to...
B and C.
The bulk.
B, C, or E and F?
Yeah, B, C, E or F, thank you. But there is no reportable action, so we'll start with the calling of the roll. Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Cole?
Present.
Councilmember Hampton?
Thankful, grateful, and blessed to be here.
Councilmember Jones stepped out, he'll be back. Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
Here.
Councilmember Masuda?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivas?
Here.
Mayor Gordo?
Here.
There's a quorum of the council present.
Pledge of allegiance.
Yes. Mr. Masuda, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones? Okay. Why don't we start with, how many cards do we have?
We have the special item.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we have a special item. Mr. Reese is here from the...
San Gabriel Valley.
San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments and is our colleague from a neighboring city. Mr. Reese, welcome to Pasadena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good evening to you and the council members. As you shared, I'm Ed Reese, and I'm proud to represent the city of Clermont and honored to serve as the new president of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Actually, one moment here.
We're looking for the PowerPoint, which I just told you.
While we prepare that, let me just say, thank you for your work. I have the great benefit of representing, as you know, the city of Pasadena, the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, and I think we have a great partnership with all of the cities in the San Gabriel Valley and very much appreciate your leadership and your efforts there.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to serve, and I'll talk a little bit more about that service tonight, as soon as the slides come up.
This is an opportunity to see how good you are if you do it outside.
I could do it outside slides, but it would be your loss. You would miss out on some great visuals. All right.
Sorry about that.
Excellent. So, as I was talking, or I was about to go into, it's really about the COG, a little background on the COG. It's truly a partnership that brings together thirty-one cities, two county supervisory districts, and many local agencies across the San Gabriel Valley. Our mission is simple but powerful, to give our region one strong unified voice, to deliver projects that improve transportation, housing, and sustainability, and most importantly, to improve the quality of life for nearly two million residents who call the San Gabriel Valley and, in part, this great community their home. The collaboration is what makes us stronger than the sum of our parts. Of course, a mission this big requires leadership. That's where our executive committee comes in. I'm proud to serve alongside a group of committed local leaders, each chosen by their peers to help guide the COG's priorities. They help set the direction, review policies, and make sure that our work reflects the needs and values of our member cities. In short, the executive committee and the governing board keep us grounded in the realities of our communities while keeping us focused on the future. And that leadership extends outward through our policy committees. These committees are where real collaboration happens. They focus on issues that touch every city: capital projects, the environment, homelessness, and transportation. We also draw on the expertise of city managers and working groups so that these local voices really shape our regional solutions. And this is where all of you come in. If you haven't already, and I know many of you have, I encourage you to get involved. Your expertise and your perspective helps to ensure that your city's voice is heard and your residents' needs are reflected in our regional decisions. And of course, leadership and collaboration are only part of the story. Implementation matters, too. That's where our staff shines. Under the leadership of Executive Director Marissa Krieter, our talented team takes ideas and turns them into action. They provide the expertise, the project management, and the support to make sure that our city's priorities are moving forward. Let me just share a few examples of what collaboration has achieved. First, our construction authority. We're the only COG in Los Angeles County that has one. We are delivering nineteen major grade separation projects, each costing approximately one hundred to two hundred million dollars each, at little to no cost, or no cost to our cities. And today, we're expanding to highway improvement projects, transit facilities, and active transportation projects. Second is SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. This state law requires us to cut food waste going to landfills. The COG has helped cities triple their business compliance rates and, at the same time, helped food banks to be able to use the food donation they have received by providing them with refrigeration and other necessary equipment. It's truly a win-win, where we're helping the environment while addressing food insecurity. And third, Measure M funding. Last year, we directed thirty-six point five million dollars to seventeen San Gabriel Valley agencies for projects that make it easier for people to go simply where they need to go. These are just a few snapshots, but they show real tangible impact the COG has had in our communities. And beyond these regional wins, we also partner with our cities in very unique ways. I'd like to highlight specifically a little bit about our partnership with the city of Pasadena. The COG currently is overseeing the creation of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to protect our communities and their assets against potential wildfire hazards. The plan helps cities prepare for and respond to wildfires, and the adoption of these plans makes the city eligible for critical state wildfire funding programs. Thanks to CAL FIRE grants secured by the COG, this effort is fully funded and free to our cities. Additionally, as a policy partner, Pasadena is a valued voice as far as our COG's policies go. As the mayor stated, he serves both on the governing board and our Olympic, Paralympic ad hoc committee. Additionally, Councilmember Rick Cole offers his expertise on the COG's homelessness committee. And I will share that the guidance by both of these members has been essential in guiding the COG and its policy decisions. I also want to acknowledge city staff, who also play an active role, with Jennifer Guest, the Assistant General Manager of the Water and Power Department, serving on the Energy, Environmental, and Natural Resources Committee, and Joaquin Siquez, Director of Transportation, and Jenny Cristales-Sevallos, the Deputy Director of Transportation, serving on the Transportation Committee. So you are highly engaged, and your involvement really means a lot to this COG. You know, at the heart of it all is what binds us together: our shared love for the San Gabriel Valley. That is why I launched the iHeartSGV program. It grew from my deep belief that we are stronger when we celebrate our common values in the communities we call home. This program is about bringing together our member cities and, through them, our residents, together in shared pride and appreciation for the San Gabriel Valley. But for me, it's also personal. My love for public service, it's soul-feeding. And this program is my way of showing gratitude for our region, for our cities, and for the people who make the San Gabriel Valley such a special place to live. The COG exists to serve you, your council, your staff, your residents. By working together, we collectively, I should say, by working together, our collective voice is louder, our reach is farther, and we deliver projects and services no city could do alone. As president, my number one priority right now is listening. I want to hear from you, your needs, your challenges, your opportunities, so that we can make sure that you're getting the most from your involvement with the COG. So please don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. My email address is on the screen. I'm committed to working with you to strengthen the San Gabriel Valley we all love. Thank you for allowing me some time this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Masuda?
Mr. Reese and I, we serve on the Gold Line Construction Authority and the Joint Powers Authority. Ed Reese is the Chair of both committees, so, Ed, thank you so much for being here, sharing all your information, and we are all volunteers as well, so thank you so much for hitting on that point. Thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure, councilmember.
Mr. Reese, maybe you'd like to introduce some of our COG colleagues and team members and, including Marissa, who are here?
Yes, actually, we'll have Marissa stand up, and this is our Executive Director, Marissa Krieter. And then we have Ricky is our Government Affairs Director. We have Jonathan back there as part of the Government Affairs Team, and we have Steph Wong, a part of our Board Liaison, and actually, she's jack-of-all-trades, really.
Yeah, and we just, as you mentioned, it's a great partnership for thirty-one cities, twenty-nine school districts, the water folks, the supervisors, the two supervisory, three supervisory districts.
Two in our COG, two in our supervision.
And certainly with our state partners, and we have a great staff at the COG, and so I want to say thank you to the staff as well.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and again, thank you for the time this evening. As you can see, I am wearing the iHeartSGV lapel pin, and tonight, I would like to leave for all of you a small token, which is your own lapel pin, to wear proudly here around Pasadena and, of course, in the San Gabriel Valley and beyond. But thank you so much. Also, forgive me, I do have another commitment after this, so forgive me as I have to exit, but I wish you the best on the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. We'll share our lapel pin with you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you to all. Next, we will turn to public comment for matters not on the agenda. We do have a full agenda, and so we're going to limit public comment, consistent with our rules, to twenty minutes in order to, for the beginning of the meeting, and then we can take public comment up after the business of the city, if anyone wishes to take that opportunity. So we'll do a minute and a half. Anyone who wants more time, again, is invited to stay after the business of the agenda is completed.
So, minute and a half, Sonia Burnt, followed by Barbara Lamprec, followed by Anthony Manusos, then Marina Romans.
Ms. Burnt, welcome.
I'd like to defer to the end of the meeting. Will we get two minutes, then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Barbara Lamprec?
Ms. Lamprec.
If you heard your name called, then if you could line up in the center aisle?
Good evening. How much time do I have?
A minute thirty.
One minute? Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I am speaking toward the, about the untoward removal of eucalyptus trees in the Arroyo on the east side of the channel. I am here tonight to bring attention to the lack of opportunity to speak in their defense because, for the last two months, the Urban Forest Advisory Committee has not met. This should be the place and time where the public can voice their concerns and obtain dialogue about the reason for removing healthy, mature trees. Our Tree Ordinance eight point five-two point oh-six-oh and point oh-six-six calls for the protection and maintenance of healthy, mature trees, even if they are not landmark, heritage, or native. While the eucalyptus trees marked for removal appear to be in excellent health, other clearly diseased eucalyptus on the south on an off path are not. These and other rotting diseased trees, less accessible to the maintenance crews, to be sure, are unmarked. Meanwhile, the trees to the north marked for removal are a famous owl habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. You had thirty seconds left, but okay.
Yep, sorry.
I heard a bell.
The bell means thirty seconds left?
Oh, okay, sorry. Hundreds, if not thousands, of people come down to watch, stare, exclaim, and photograph with delight. Raising their babies in that small grove of tall eucalyptus trees allows the parents to scan their entire environment. The owls disdain the diseased trees to the south. And with a bit of research, it is clear that the long-touted view that eucalyptus are poisonous to other plants is controversial.
Ms. Lamprec, your time expired?
And the proof of that is evident in the Arroyo, where a myriad of plants are flourishing under the owl's habitat. Yes, we love native anything. That's not the point.
Anthony Manusos is next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Marina Romans, then Donald Wallace, then Ken Compton.
Greetings, I am Anthony Manusos, and I want to bring greetings to you, Mayor Gordo, and to councilmembers. I'm deeply concerned about what happened with Safe Parking on Monday. Others will speak about this, so I'm not going to speak about this now. I want to thank you for listening to our concern about ethical investment and divestment from companies that are profiting from the genocide in Gaza. I'm speaking to you tonight as a Quaker, representing the American Friends Service Committee, which won the Nobel Prize for Peace in nineteen forty-eight. As Quakers, we recognize the divine is present in every human being and confess the equality of all to live safely and without fear. We're also compelled, as Quakers, to speak truth with integrity, including when it is uncomfortable, yet always to speak it with love. On July twenty-eighth of this year, eight major Quaker organizations signed a joint statement calling Israel's war in Gaza genocide and recommending steps to end it. The statement calls for a personal ceasefire and also for divestment from companies that profit from the genocide in Gaza. I urge the council to take to heart this call for divestment from companies profiting from the genocide, so Pasadena can be a moral example to other cities. As Jesus said, "Where our treasure is, that's where our hearts are."
Marina Romans?
Let's invest our funds in what gives life, not what destroys it.
Next speaker.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Followed by Donald Wallace, then Ken Compton, then Gerald Watson.
I am also here to speak about, to voice my support for the preservation of those Arroyo trees that Barbara spoke about. The first time we found out that those trees were scheduled for removal is when we saw green circles painted on the trees, and at that time, I called the city and was told those trees are scheduled for removal. There was nothing posted either in Arroyo or nearby. A number of bird watchers and walkers and runners intended to attend one of the Urban Forestry Advisory Committee meetings. However, two of those, two consecutive ones, were canceled, and that's why we are speaking here today. Those trees provide shade, they capture carbon, they provide wildlife habitat, and, as Barbara mentioned, owls are nesting there. Also, there are hummingbirds that are nesting in eucalyptus trees. The canary pines, nineteen of those trees have been scheduled for removal. Some of them are canary pines, which are fire-resistant, and others are eucalyptus trees. As many of you may know, that a number of those survived eaten fires, so they are not as flammable as it's been believed.
Your time has expired. Donald Wallace, followed by Ken Compton, then Gerald Watson, then Olden Denham.
And if you have comments that you want to submit in writing, if anyone has comments that they'd like to submit in writing, we will circulate them among the council.
Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Donald Wallace. I am employed with Lighthouse Security Group, located in Montebello, California. I've been fortunate and blessed with the opportunity to help individuals to seek and maintain and obtain employment throughout the United States. Sixty percent of our employees we hire are local residents of the Pasadena area. We have helped local residents obtain their Guard Card certification, job placement after the completion of the program. This will help to remove individuals from hanging out at our parks, street corners, and et cetera, and also give them an opportunity to provide for their family. I'm also a longtime resident of the Pasadena and Altona area and have a big interest in helping my community. That's why Lighthouse Security is committed to helping our residents obtain employment and resources, so they will become productive citizens in our society. We have a lot of individuals in our community who have given up and feel like they have nowhere to turn to for help. Each of us have a part to play in this. What can Lighthouse Security do as a company to support the city of Pasadena and partner up with various departments within the city of Pasadena? On behalf of Lighthouse Security and our residents, I am a hundred percent committed to helping our community. Hope you are as well. I truly appreciate this city council for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ken Compton?
Sure, for your comments, and we'll ask staff to follow up with you.
Ken Compton, followed by Gerald Watson, then Olden Denham, then Alan Shea.
Sir, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council. I also, I'm a business owner here in Pasadena for thirty-five years. We own property here in Pasadena, commercial property, and I'm also an advocate of saving the trees down in the Arroyo. The ones that were slated for removal are clear-cutting, for whatever reason. I think they're mature, healthy trees that should be able to remain. They offer shade, they offer cooling for the environment, the local environment down in the Arroyo, and they're beautiful, and there should be no reason to remove them, at least before they get removed. It's our hope that we get a chance to at least voice our opinion and be able to have a forum on this that's going to be objective and allow us the opportunity to bring this to the forefront versus these meetings that have been canceled and not allow us the opportunity to speak. But we're thankful for this opportunity this evening, and we pray and hope that we can save the trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Watson, are you here? If not, then we'll go to Olden Denham, then Alan Shea, then John Pelzer.
Mr. Denham, good to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to come to you a little different tonight, because I want to express my love and my honor about Pasadena. In fact, I'm wearing it on my shirt. I'm a graduate of John Muir from nineteen sixty-eight, and we're going to be celebrating the hundred years coming next year. But at the same time, I still can't let go of this because I know, and you know what I'm here about, and some of you know the truth. Some of you know the truth, some of you know the truth that hasn't been dealt with, and shame on you. Shame on you if you know the truth and don't want to deal with it. Some of you don't know the truth. If you don't know the truth, haven't looked at the footage or the law, then that means you didn't care enough to be concerned enough to look it up. Shame on you as well. I do want to say I appreciate the fact that I've been invited to speak to some of you personally, so if you don't know the truth, I'm going to let you know the truth. But like I said, once again, some of you do know the truth, and you don't want to act on it or can't act on it. Shame on you. And I'm going to give you the floor right now, because that's about all I have to say, and I'm going to speak to each and every one of you, if I can, personally, privately, and if you don't know the truth, I can show it to you. Let your own eyes tell you. I'll say what Crump said when he was here, said, "Say no more, look at the video."
Alan Shea, followed by John Pelzer, then Cloud Morgan Clark, then David Delgado.
Good evening, Alan Shea. I'm coming before, again, the council to try and clear up the corruption that we have here in our city. Our city has a history of racism, covers up, covering things up, and this city council is continuing the legacy with our mayor leading the way. He stated that there were three investigations of the Anthony McLean murder, and they came out with the same results. But not one time did the mayor indicate that the city attorney brought forth AB three ninety-two in its correct form and whether it was applied properly. So are you telling us, Mayor Gordo, that the officers are above the law? If that's the case, please put that in a referendum, so we will stop coming in here and making this position. But until you clear up that you are the lead of corruption for our city here, this is what has been happening, and for you, as a man who is a migrant, or Hispanic, or however you want to be categorized, you should have a higher, a higher level of responsibility to understand. You walked in our shoes, but it seemed like you forgot that, Mayor. And I hope that you find out, because everybody's in here wanting an equal share. Thank you.
John Pelzer, followed by Cloud Morgan Clark, then David Delgado.
Welcome, sir.
I'm John Pelzer, and I want to thank you for this second opportunity to address the Safe Parking Program with you. I have been a volunteer with Shower of Hope for the past seven years. For the past four years, I have been delivering meals on Wednesdays to the two Safe Park locations in Westlake and Glassell Park. During this time, I have seen the Safe Park locations become more than places for a safe night's sleep, restroom access, and a meal. They are now communities sharing the same hopes and aspirations we all have for ourselves and our families. And no one is more intent on having these locations be safe for those in and around them than the Safe Park residents themselves. As a result, I believe that these locations are among the most boring and uneventful places in all Los Angeles. I sincerely hope Pasadena will be the next chapter in the success of Safe Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Cloud Morgan Clark, then David Delgado.
Welcome, sir. If you can repeat the names?
Oh, it was Cloud Morgan Clark, then David Delgado?
And if you hear your name, please form a line.
Good evening, Cloud Morgan Clark. I'm a senior at Thurgood Marshall. Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor Gordo. So I'm here to ask that you agendize a citywide ethical investment policy, which includes divestment from companies that are complicit in genocide, war crimes, and severe violations of international law. I'm a senior in high school, I'm applying to college. One college, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, Lewis and Clark College. Their board just approved a ethical investment policy, which includes divestment from companies that consistently and knowingly facilitates severe violations of international law and human rights. They also disclosed investments in a number of such companies, including Lockheed Martin. We can do the same here in Pasadena. I also come from a Jewish family, right? My favorite cousin, one of my favorite people, is an English teacher in Tel Aviv. I'm really proud of my heritage, and it's because of that, not in spite of it, that I'm here today asking that we in Pasadena do what is right, what is required of us as human beings who respect international law and divest from the war machine. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. David Delgado, then Mel Tiller Keraton?
Mr. Delgado, welcome.
Good evening, my name is David Delgado. I have lived and paid your property tax in Pasadena for the last twenty-plus years. I want to talk about, I watched the city council meeting last week, specifically the city council dealing with the Safe Parking Program at All Saints. I watched first with really great interest to see what would happen, then a lot of confusion, then anger, and frankly, ended with a lot of disgust about the action, or rather inaction, that city council took last week. I counted probably three, maybe four ways you guys broke the law last week, or at the very least gave city attorney or outside council, most likely, a lot of work to do. Frankly, I'll say it bluntly, because I might be the only one, you guys really stepped in a big pile of it last week. But the good news is it's not too late to correct your course. I can actually probably say, well, I can't guarantee it, because you never know, but but you will be revisiting this one way or the other. But it's best to do it the good way and just call it back up for reconsideration, for new information, and revisit it properly when a full council is present because you have this fecocte thing that requires five, even though a majority votes for something? I don't know where that's all about. We should revisit that, too, on a ballot measure, too, instead of a bond measure. So that's what I've got to say about that. Victor, okay?
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mel Tiller Keratin, then, uh, Charlotte Biancherry.
Mayor and council members, my name is Mel Tiller Karatna, and I'm the executive director of the Shower of Hope. I had a little bit more planned to say, but the gentleman behind me spoke really clearly. All I can say is I'm gonna bring the receipts. If this injustice is not corrected, not just for us as a program, but for the people who could be using this program, the twenty-five people every night, we'll bring the receipts by following up with litigation. So I strongly urge you, as the Shower of Hope, to please reconsider and listen to the staff findings that says that this program, Safe Parking, is exempt from CEQA guidelines. Thank you.
Charlotte Biancherry, followed by Lucy Petit.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Biancherry. I'm seventeen years old, and I'm a senior at Sequoia School in Pasadena. And I'm here to remind you of your duty as public servants to serve the people. And we, the people of Pasadena, are telling you we want our city to stand for justice and to divest. Every child denied safety today could have been playing tomorrow. Every family ripped from their home today could have been together tonight. And every life stolen today could have had a future. Every innocent person who suffers because of inaction has our city's hands, ha- has our city's blood on their hands. We cannot sit quietly while money and politics outweigh human life. Pasadena cannot and should not profit from oppression. If our city's investments support companies and, uh, lead to more suffering, then what does that say about us and our values and our humanity? You have the power to act and the responsibility to act. Do not let Pasadena be remembered as a city that watched while people suffered. Stand up, stand firm, and stand on the right side of history. The world is watching, my generation is watching, and we, the people of Pasadena, are watching. Silence is complicity, and we beg you to divest. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Petit, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lucy. I am seventeen years old. I attend school in Pasadena, and I work at the local homeless shelter. Thank you so much. Um, I would like to come to you tonight as the great granddaughter of Jewish Holocaust refugees who were stripped of their citizenship and arrested in Germany before they fled to California. Because of my heritage, I have a moral obligation to advocate against genocidal practices in any part of the world because I, too, have lost family to ethnic cleansing, which is why you, Pasadena City Council, must divest from Israel. I know that Pasadena can join the cities in the United States and around the world that will divest from a country that is causing genocide and continued occupation of Palestinian territory. I know this because in nineteen eighty-eight, the Pasadena City Council divested from South Africa, and Councilmember Rick Cole said, "Divestment seems real simple to me. Maybe we can make more money, but that's not the type of profits I want part of." Today, the decision is just as simple. I stand before you as a Jew, telling you that divestment from Israel is not anti-Semitic, but a true expression of solidarity with the struggles of the Jewish community who have, uh, fought against white supremacy and genocide. I stand before you as a young person who is coming of age in a world where Palestinian life is considered less important than meager financial profits bought by the blood of innocents. I stand before you as your constituent to tell you that you have a moral imperative as good people
Your time has expired.
to divest and take the step towards collective liberation. Thank you very much.
Mary Ann. Mary Ann Albina will be the last speaker. Mary, Mary Ann Albina will be the last speaker.
My name is Mary Ann Albina, and I'm Palestinian, born in Jerusalem. Israel stole all of my family's property. And when we overcame the fear of building a new home, it took us eighteen years to get a building permit. For Jewish Israelis, a permit would have taken three months. Three months versus eighteen years. Had we built without a permit, Israel would have demolished the con- demolished the construction with caterpillar bulldozers where you're investing some of your money. Israel issues Palestinians different colored IDs. Friends with green IDs could never visit me, my home, or my family because I have a blue ID. Mixed marriages among Palestinians with different colored IDs are made impossible. Israel prohibits us from cohabitating, even if we had children together. And it forbids us from being in the same car or being in some of the same roads. This is only a sample of apartheid that your one minute and a half gives me. As you develop your ethical investment policy, follow the UN, ICJ, Human Rights Watch, and Amnesty International that stay, stand against Israel apartheid. Ignoring your ties abroad while opposing fascism at home is a contradiction this council cannot carry if you want to claim more clarity.
Thank you. That completes the twenty-minute time period at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so we, we do have, um, an opportunity for public comment. Once the business, once the agendized business, uh, of the city is completed, we do have a number of speakers on the, on agendized matters. Yes.
So the speakers that we have left, uh, obviously Sonia Burnt, but then Hidab Tarifi, Brittany, James Maddox, S.T. Chandler, Cave Naini, Annette Yassen, uh, Jonathan Ashworth, Jasmine Abdullah, Yadi, Jose Maria Rios Espada, and Jill Shook, and Susan York.
Okay. Okay, so we will, uh, take those names, uh, once we complete the agenda and business of the city. Okay. So let's move on to the agenda and the consent calendar.
Mayor, are there any, uh, items on the, on the, uh, consent?
Yeah, there's, there is one. Why don't we hold that matter? Oh, this is, okay. Okay, prior to taking action, uh, are there speakers on the consent calendar? Sorry, I've lost, uh, the statement I need to read.
Uh, yes, we have a speaker on item two and item eight and seven. Two, eight, two, seven, and eight.
So why don't we hold two, seven, and eight?
There's fourteen, oh, my apologies.
I was just suggesting maybe we just let the public commenter speak and then, um...
Two, eight, fourteen, fifteen, and seven.
Okay, um, so let's take public comment for item two first.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Two minutes.
Yeah, man, I just really came to show support for that brother over there, right? That came talking about his security guard, uh, business because he really is giving back jobs. But then I started reading through the, um, agenda. So I just got some questions. Where's the city manager? Because we're gonna give a million dollars away and to, uh, Tetra. That's who's getting the, um, no, Pipe Tech, who's getting the, uh, contract. And it's very vague because then I looked up who they are, and it just says science, technology, and innovation, right? But what are the services that they're actually providing to us for us to give them a million dollars, right? Because our schools are now being defunded thirty-five million, right? So now we gotta be very conscious on where our money goes, right? So where, what services are we giving this company? Anybody's gonna answer this? And, um, because then I started reading some more, and it says, let me flip, I'm sorry, hold on. Because I started that from the big book, because I tell you why this here. Okay, it says that, um, it's going on the, the road, basically sewers, right? And then CCTV, the sewer, it's very... Y'all can hear me, I got a big mouth. Okay, for the record, you're right. Thank you, Michelle. But listen, um, CCTV, right? And then the, uh, sewer, how does that even go together? How does that even correlate? You get what I'm saying? Like, we gotta read the fine print. And then our city manager gets, like, stipulations in on what money goes what. There's a whole, like, four hundred other thousand dollars that if, in case shit happens, fund for that same thing. I swear to God, that's, that's what I took from it. So where, where, where's this money going? And who are we giving it to and why? Who's gonna answer the questions? And then I want to be on a Northwest Pasadena Commission. And Justin, you have an empty seat, and Victor, you have an empty seat. So who's gonna put me on there? And then the next thing I have to say is...
Jasmine, you, we want to be fair to everyone. Jasmine. Ja- no, no, Jasmine. Jasmine.
For the record, let me get this out real quick, Vic.
Ja- Jasmine, come...
We've been over police right now, Jackie Robinson. They run, they tell people, if you don't leave right now, you'll get a ticket.
Jasmine, we...
You'll get a ticket.
We want to be fair to everyone.
Like, that was a threat, that's what they're...
Jasmine.
Nobody, all we're doing out there is...
Okay, next speaker, please.
Olden Denham, followed by Bert Newton, followed by Sonia Burnt.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Then Thomas Ty.
Jasmine. Jasmine, please. Thank, next speaker. We want to be fair to everyone. Mr. Denham, you're up. Mr. Mr. Denham. By the way, CCTV is the way to scope the sewers to find blockages. It's a camera that goes into the sewer. Mr. Denham? Mr. Denham?
Could you move the mic?
Once again, I'm proud of my city, and I love Pasadena. I love Pasadena. But it's also like, uh, a, a child loves his mother even though she's a crackhead. We have a lot of problems here we need to deal with. And, and actually, and I'm trying to agri- address some of them. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for finally getting Pharaoh Street worked on. But they're, they're working on it from Washington up, and it needs to go all the way down from Mountain up because we have, the road is so bad. I don't know who inspected the, the, the repair work, but they need someone else to inspect the repair work that's going on in Pasadena. There's several other things about the highways in Pasadena that need dealing with. And I just want to say thank you for addressing those. And we still need to address Raymond because I'll say it once again. Raymond has been the bumpiest street since I've been here, and it's been over sixty years since I've been here. And if this was anywhere near the Rose Bowl, that, those places around the Rose Bowl have been finished. Every three years, they redo them. So I want the same kind of appreciation for my neighborhood as we see around, around the Rose Bowl. And, uh, I, you guys got me involved in the city politics now, and I'm not going away. And this one incident with the Anthony McLean thing is not going away. And I'm gonna address all of you because it's been dereliction of duty about all of you. I, I love you, but I'm ashamed that each and every one of you were not doing something about it.
Thank you.
Bert Newton, followed by Sonia Burnt, then Thomas Ty.
How many minutes do I have?
A minute and a half.
Minute and a half.
The mayor said minute and a half. Okay.
agendas.
Do you want to do two? Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Making Housing and Community Happen strongly supports the Port, uh, program for its effective service to our unhoused neighbors. Port is number eight on the agenda. Uh, despite rising housing costs, which have resulted in increasing homelessness, programs like Port have kept the homeless count from rising significantly. But it is a costly solution which addresses homelessness after it occurs. Preventing homelessness is more effective than responding to it. And providing housing for everyone is the way that we can do that. But this takes time. A practical, cost-effective interim measure is Safe Parking. Pasadena's last homeless count showed thirty-seven people living in their vehicles. Many are employed and do not need Port's intensive support. The Safe Parking Program at Trinity Lutheran Church has proven to be an effective and successful model. I attend the monthly meetings at Trinity and know some of the Parkers personally, as well as some of the graduates. I confirm what Pastor Richter told you last week. There have been no police calls on the Safe Parkers. Now, the Safe Parkers sometimes call the police...
This item was about Port.
Yeah, this is because this is, this is, this is, could, could, um, this is less expensive than Port. Port's good, but we need other programs as well. Despite city staff working with All Saints for two years to create a second Safe Parking Program at All Saints Church, that initiative was stopped last Monday due to, in part, to a denied CEQA exemption. But that denial is likely illegal since state law does not allow CEQA to be used to stop programs for unhoused neighbors. So I urge you to reconsider and approve All Saints' Safe Parking Program in addition to funding Port. Thank you.
Ms. Burnt, welcome.
Sonia Burnt, followed by Thomas Ty.
This is an agenda item fourteen. There's a discrepancy between the eligibility criteria for the program as stated in the staff report versus as stated in the RFP for the grant. The RFP states that eligibility is limited to adults or juveniles who, one, have been arrested, charged with or convicted of a criminal offense, and have a history of mental health or substance use disorders. The staff report, however, states that the persons merely at risk of arrest are also eligible and that PPD can do a direct referral without issuing an arrest or citation. Why is this discrepancy critical? If someone is charged with theft or drug crime, this program would be better for the offender than jail, given that it provides housing with services. But if someone is simply sleeping on public property after hour, after hours, and receives an offer of housing through this program only after being thrown into the criminal justice system, our community would push back. In fact, there were scores of residents opposing the criminalization of homelessness at the September twenty twenty-four Discussion of Homelessness Post Grants Pass. Staff told this council in September twenty twenty-four that it currently was generally not enforcing sleeping on public property, but in light of grants passed, these charges could potentially become more commonplace. If the city's plan is now to prosecute biological acts as crimes and throw these offenders into the criminal justice system in exchange for housing, the community has already told you it is unacceptable. If the city's policy is to continue not prosecuting biological functions, then the vast majority of our three hundred and forty-two unsheltered folks aren't even eligible because they aren't committing crimes. There's a homelessness emergency in our city, but several of you continue to resist providing the city resources necessary to house our unsheltered folks with services. Please, all of you, start treating this crisis with the urgency required. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnt.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thomas Ty.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here to speak about maybe something that has gone a little bit less attention, understandably. But it relates to homelessness crisis. And if you look on your agendas here, we have these objective design standards that are up for a vote tonight, and I strongly urge you all to approve them. No doubt, you are all aware that we don't have enough housing in the city of any type, of any form, at any price. And therefore, the solution to that is to build as quickly as we can of all types at any price in every place we can. The faster we have these objective design standards...
Sir, are you here to speak on the objective design standards? Because that's item sixteen, and you put down fifteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We're gonna get to that. That's gonna be a public hearing. If you could hold tight for a few minutes, we'll call your, call you again. Appreciate you. Um, that appears to complete comments on the consent.
Okay, so that completes our consent calendar. Um, and, uh, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Um, is there a motion? And prior to taking the, uh, mo- uh, sweep motion, is there a sweep motion? So be- before we, um, take a sweep motion, I have just a quick question on item fourteen. Um, to, um, Ms. Burnt's, um, public comment, I'd like, like to ask the city attorney to clarify.
Yes, and our chief assistant city prosecutor, Tim Wellman, is present. If you could go over there. Um, and, uh, to some extent, um, there, there was, uh, that seat there, yeah. Uh, that's fine. The, the, um, this proposal would apply to those who at, who are at risk of being arrested. So to the extent that wasn't clear in the agenda report and the documents, that's what council would be approving. And I'd ask Mr. Wellman to correct anything that I've said, uh, with respect to that. Your microphone.
Thank you. Uh, Tim Wellman, Chief Assistant City Prosecutor. My understanding of what you mentioned is accurate. Uh, and to the extent that, um, we can broaden the program so it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who has an open criminal case, that is what our proposal is to do.
Right. And we are allowed, under the terms of the grant, to, um...
And we are allowed, under the terms of the grant, to, um, do what we're proposing to do.
This is what I have been informed from our grant consultant, and I can confirm that as needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? Just so I understand, um, your, your response? And I'm grateful to hear that that is the response, because I had the same concern that Ms. Burnt raised. But practically, how would that look? Because I understand it's one thing for someone to be issued a citation or, uh, be sucked into the criminal justice system, and then it becomes almost like a diversion into this alternate path. But for someone who hasn't been charged or issued a citation, how would they get access to these services through this process?
So there are a number of different referral processes, and one is someone who has an open active case and is coming to court. They can be identified.
Got it, yeah.
But other sources are through Port.
Okay.
And through our police department's HOPE program. So there are other options, uh, for entry into the program without necessarily having to have an open case.
Okay, that's great to hear, because those are our teams who are out there every day, they'd be able to refer people through, to this program without having to issue them a citation. Okay, got it, thank you for that.
Okay, with the clarification on those items, I'd like to make a sweet motion.
Okay, is the sweet motion on the consent calendar?
Does that include four?
Yeah, it would include the, yes.
I have a question. Can we take four out, out?
Sure, did you have a question on four? Well, except, why don't you just ask your question, then we're gonna take a sweet motion on the entirety?
Okay, and, and then seven is also being held, correct or no?
All, all of consent was included in the motion.
Oh, okay, all right, well, then I have a question on, on, uh, is seven, in this, is the sweet motion the recommendation from the Finance Committee? Rather than the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, as amended, okay, that's fine. That was my question on seven. On number four, I'm sorry, is it number four? No, it's number six, I apologize. Um, number six is the design of bike lanes on St. John and Pasadena Avenue. And I have the same concerns, Mayor, that, um, that, that go to what we discussed at Finance Committee. Um, those are both fast, one-way streets. And I don't know what the constraints are. So I have two questions. One is, what are the thoughts about protected versus a Class Two bike lane and sharrows? And, and the answer may be, we don't know yet. Uh, and then the second is the process, because again, I was concerned that we really, um, we didn't involve the Transportation Advisory Commission, and we didn't involve bicycle stakeholders in the Union Street, um, extension. So those are my two questions. What are our thoughts about a protected bike lane, uh, here? And secondly, um, who's all gonna have input into the process?
Joaquin Cicas, Director of Transportation for the City of Pasadena. On the first question, a protected bike lane is anticipated for a majority of the Pasadena-St. John corridor. Um, the way the conceptual design looks now, it's elevated almost at sidewalk width so that we could, sidewalk height, I'm sorry, so that we could, uh, separate the vehicular traffic from the motorist traffic there. Uh, as you get further north, um, along the corridor, it's, uh, could either be buffered or, um, protected. We're looking at options there, but we have the width to, to make it a, um, a, uh, more protected bike corridor.
Appreciate that, Mr. Cicas. And then, uh, who, how will you conduct the outreach?
The outreach for Pasadena-St. John is, um, being conducted through the outreach contract for the, um, measure, our MIP projects that came to City Council. This is one of the, um, five projects that's, was listed on that outreach, um, program, and that includes, um, everything from, um, neighborhood meetings to, uh, doing pop-up events. And we will be taking, uh, the project again through the Advisory Commission. The project list and the conceptual was already taken to Transportation Advisory Commission before that list came to City Council for approval.
So again, the, the concern I have, um, is we have struggled to build a citywide usable network of bicycles, uh, because we've done these projects one at a time. And if we just simply ask the immediate neighbors, what are the trade-offs between parking, um, bicycle lanes, et cetera? Um, we're not really taking the holistic view of how we connect the city with a usable set of bike lanes. So I just hope that, um, the Transportation Advisory Commission will have input into, into the process for, for outreach so that we, we genuinely draw upon a citywide constituency for a citywide network.
Definitely.
Okay, appreciate that. That's all the questions I had.
Mayor, if I may, on item seven, Councilmember Cole referenced some, uh, particular direction that was provided at Finance, and I think for the record here would be important, perhaps I can ask the Director of Transportation to, uh, explain what was, uh, done in Finance so that the council is clear on what this item before it includes. Mr. Cicas?
Thank you. Um, the, uh, amendment to the staff recommendation was to continue to work with, um, Old Pasadena and the Business District on safety enhancements along that corridor, um, along that bicycle corridor.
Yes, I think the Transportation Advisory Commission also ought to be involved in that.
In, and I'm sorry, in the coordination with Old Pasadena?
Absolutely, no, absolutely. But, um, again, we wanna make that, it's, I don't wanna belabor what we discussed in Finance Committee, but the, the idea is to make sure that we're not done with just painting bike lanes and sharrows.
Far from done. Okay. Um, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. If there's no other questions on this item, I just had a quick question on items four and five. I believe that'd be the Public Works Director or perhaps the city manager can address it. Because item four is through the miscellaneous sidewalk repair program, and then item five is the community development block grant funding. So I just wanna make sure that, um, item five is not replacing item four for those areas that are in the CDBG area, and rather, it's supplementing that work.
Mr. Cole? All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Greg Devink, Public Works Director. The answer to that question is we are proportionally spending the general dollars in the CDBG qualifying area, just ignoring that there is additional CDBG funding. So it, it is.
So it is supplementing, okay.
CDBG, CDBG funding is, is being spent in the qualifying area. The other funding is being spent proportionally inside and outside of that area, like CDBG didn't exist.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So now we have a sweet motion. Uh, I would, uh, um, like to read into the record, uh, regarding item twelve, it is required by the Brown Act prior to taking action on item twelve regarding compensation of the city manager. This is to announce the recommendation of the, the city manager, A, receive a three percent general wage increase effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, a ten percent one-time, uh, uh, payment in recognition of his performance. Um, increase in the auto allowance from six hundred dollars to seven hundred dollars per month, a one-time allotment of forty additional hours of management time off, uh, and change to the management time off bank to have a soft cap and cash out hours exceeding the cap. Um, and so, on behalf of the city council, I'd just like to thank our city manager for his service, particularly in the past year, and this is a recognition of, uh, how difficult it has been to lead this complex and complicated organization, um, in the past year, particularly with everything we've faced, uh, in the fires and public safety, um, with the COVID and the federal government, and, you know, just the, the parade of terribles, as I've referred to them, that we've seen, uh, in the past year. And, um, the council, on behalf of the council, we'd like to thank you, Miguel, for your able and, uh, stable leadership during this very difficult period. Okay, uh, with that, there's a sweet motion. Um, and, uh...
If I could just read the amendment to item seven, uh, is, uh, as amended by the Finance Committee, to work with the Old Pasadena Management District and the Transportation Advisory Committee, uh, as part of the review process, and to look into, um, measures to further protect bicycle safety and to reduce speeds on Union as part of that approval.
Okay. Mr. Cole? Okay, moved and seconded. Are there...
We have to do a rule call.
Mr. Madison is participating remotely, so we, under the rules, have to conduct the rule call.
Uh, Council, Councilmember Cole to approve the sweet motion?
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rebus?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
That motion is approved without objection?
Uh, Mayor, before we go into the other matters, um, as customary, um, public commoners that come and speak, just really quickly on the trees, could we give, uh, feedback? Uh, I'm sorry, update to those that reached out about the trees that are gonna be cut in the arroyo, and also, um, maybe in the city manager's newsletter? Also give the whole council, uh, explanation to why those trees are being cut?
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. They, they are beautiful trees, but I, I think, uh, an explanation, um, from, from the, uh, staff is, is appropriate.
So we're moving on to item sixteen, Mayor?
Yes.
So item sixteen, um, this is the time and place for the public hearing on zoning code amendment to implement objective design standards for high-density residential development. On November sixth, thirteen, and twenty, twenty twenty-five, the public hearing notice was published in the Pasadena Press. Five letters in support of the overall objective design framework and proposing various suggestions to eliminate subjectivity and support community benefits were received by the city clerk's office as, city clerk's office, as well as one letter in support of the staff recommendation and to amend, uh, with an amendment to include extending the choice of all applicants regardless of lot size. The correspondence was, uh, posted online, distributed to the council as part of the record for this item.
Okay. Um, with that, uh, we'll start with the opening comments from, uh, the city manager. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this presentation will be introduced by Jennifer Page, Director of Planning and Community Development, and Martin Potter, Principal Planner, will be making the presentation.
Thank you, yes, Martin Potter's gonna make the presentation. I just wanna add that this, um, represents almost three years of work. Um, since we were directed to do this, a lot of participation by our Planning Commission, um, our, our community members, um, and a lot of work by staff. So with that, I'm just gonna hand it over to Martin Potter to walk through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Martin Potter, uh, Principal Planner with the Community Planning Department. So just for some background on this item, um, there's two pieces of legislation I wanted to walk through, uh, one being Senate Bill three thirty, or the Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen. And this bill, uh, specified that local jurisdictions shall not impose or enforce new design standards established after January first, twenty twenty, uh, specifically related to multifamily residential and mixed-use projects unless those standards were objective in nature. And the bill went further on to define what objective means, um, which is that it involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, and is uniformly verifiable by reference to external and uniform benchmarks or criteria that are available and knowable to both the development applicant or the proponent, um, and the public official. Um, also, in twenty twenty-two, Assembly Bill twenty-three thirty-four was, uh, passed by the governor. Um, it amended state density bonus law to clarify that when you have a range of densities that are permitted, the base density is the maximum number that's allowed, uh, by either the zoning, the specific plan, or a land use element of the general plan as applicable to a project. On December fifth, twenty twenty-two, the city council directed staff to study objective design standards that were related specifically to higher-density residential and mixed-use developments, um, to ensure that there was compliance with state law. The zoning code currently includes a, a range of relevant objective standards. Uh, these include our City of Gardens standards, um, which are applicable to projects of up to forty-eight dwelling units per acre, uh, urban housing standards for projects that are above forty-eight dwelling units per acre, mixed-use project standards, um, those for, for projects that have both residential and, uh, non-residential or commercial components. And then our recently adopted specific plan areas, um, which include new objective design standards, um, specific to each specific plan. Um, these are related to things like street wall height or building modulation, uh, stepbacks, historic adjacency, et cetera. Uh, so tonight, the city is considering additional objective standards, uh, for new residential and mixed-use projects, and these would be for above forty-eight dwelling units per acre, um, which are primarily located within our specific plan areas. There are also a number of existing design guideline documents, um, that the city has adopted and continues to adopt. Um, most of these are still applicable, um, because they were adopted before January first, twenty twenty. Um, the, the main ones are the Design Guidelines for Neighborhood, Commercial, and Multifamily Districts, and the Citywide Design Principles. Um, and as I mentioned, the specific plans also have a lot of design guidelines, um, built into them. This shows the general plan's land use diagram, and in particular, it shows, uh, medium mixed-use densities and high-mixed-use densities. Uh, the medium-mixed-use densities are the lighter orange, and the high-mixed-use are the slightly darker areas. You can see that those are predominantly within our specific plan boundaries, which are in the dark outlines. Um, and these are the kind, these are the areas that, um, allow the kind of density that these objective design standards would be applicable to. Um, and as I mentioned, they're predominantly in specific plans. There's a couple of areas where they are outside of specific plans, and those are highlighted in the red boxes there. Since twenty twenty-three, um, staff has held approximately ten meetings, um, with the Planning Commission and Design Commission. Um, these ranged from study sessions where, where we looked at specific items related to objective design standards, um, and public hearings where recommendations were made. Uh, the most recent one being, um, a public hearing on October eighth, twenty twenty-five, with the Planning Commission. Through the study session process, uh, and hearings, the Planning Commission had directed staff to develop standards that would result in new, new development that was simple and elegant. Uh, staff compared and contrasted the design features of traditional and modern buildings, focusing on those between four and eight stories, which, uh, seemed to be the types of buildings that would, um, result in those kinds of densities, um, to look at the specific kinds of, uh, building features that would achieve this goal. And through this process, we identified two appropriate building forms, uh, Type One, which had previously been referred to throughout the hearing and study session process as simple form standards, and Type Two, which was referred to as articulated form standards. Um, and these were based on traditional building designs, as well as the contemporary examples of buildings that emulate traditional styles, uh, as well as various comments received throughout the process from the workshops, um, that we had with the Planning Commission and Design Commission. On October eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission considered the proposed amendments and recommended that the city council approve the amendments as presented by staff, uh, with the following changes. The first being to refine the terms "simple form" and "articulated form," which we have refined into Type One and Type Two, to include a range of permitted colors for buildings.
Mayor, if I, I, I apologize for interrupting, but, um, I'd just been advised by the city attorney that out of abundance of caution, because my primary residence is within the area, I should recuse myself from this, uh, discussion. So I'll come back for the specific plan.
But this, this, that is the most absurd ruling I've yet heard in a year.
Well, what he, he showed, uh, a map, and he lived in the middle of a particular area that was, uh, we'd have to look at the, um, effect on the public generally in his district.
Well, couldn't we vote on that area separately? So he could hear everything else?
You could, you'd have to vote on the part that he's conflicted on first, and then he could join. If he had, if he has a conflict. It's, I mean, uh, it just came to my attention, so I'm trying to make, give advice at the meeting.
But...
I mean, at this case, at this, at this rate, it seems like we're all gonna be conflicted out at some point.
I mean, I for sure would if we're, because I, I, if it includes the Northlake specific plan, which I'm conflicted out for the next item, then I would also be conflicted here as well, so... At which point, I don't know if we lose a corner.
I mean, the design, the, the, the argument that would have to be made is it would have a material effect on him selling his condo, um, that...
On the value, uh, a material financial effect... On the value, uh, a material financial effect on his interest in his property.
Fair enough.
Within, uh, that's what the language is.
And, and, objective design standards, best I can tell, he's probably not going to develop his condo into a high-rise apartment. I just, that's my guess.
Well, um, looking at the map...
You never know.
He'd have to get the approval of all the other, um, property owners as well.
It wouldn't just be, it, it wouldn't just be his condo, it would be properties in close proximity to his condo.
Right.
And given, given where the state has put us in terms of density, that's not...
But again, what, 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 how would, uh, design standards which apply to new development have anything to do with...
New development within...
Yeah.
The area close to his property.
And what, what would that, what, what's the point of that?
It could impact the value, potentially, maybe not, uh, but it could potentially impact the value, the, uh, financial interest that he has in his property, meaning the value of his property.
So, uh, we're, we're not talking about zoning change here, we're talking about objective design standards. We're not talking about the, the, the idea that somehow, um, a property that would sell for four-point-eight million within five hundred feet will now sell for four-point-seven or four-point-nine based upon objective design standards, and that that would raise his property value or lower his property value five hundred feet away, it's just...
Within five hundred feet.
It would make no sense at all.
Mayor, just a point of order, please, when you're...
Yeah, I, it's, I mean, we don't, these are rules, uh, statewide rules, not...
We didn't make these up.
Yeah, we don't make these up, believe me, we, I'm, I, I'm equally frustrated with, uh, some of us not being able to participate on things like Ms. Rebus on the specific plan. Uh, it's, I think it's...
And if the advice to one member isn't, uh, participate, I mean, I would take that advice as well, just briefly, I want to say, and, and at which point, you would live, lose a quorum in the room, and Councilmember Madison couldn't participate, so I just wanted to throw that out.
But, but Mayor, that's what I wanted to address, if I could, and I did have my hand up.
Mr. Madison, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm hearing that the city attorney has identified this in the meeting. There is, and this may be what Councilmember Cole's thinking about, and Vice Mayor Rebus as well, there is a public generally exception.
Correct.
But I'm hearing that the city attorney shouldn't have to analyze this on the fly. Um, I, I don't know if this is time-sensitive tonight, but, um, it looks to me like there may be a public generally exception to this, but that's not something that she can give oral, the city attorney, excuse me, Michelle, the city attorney can give oral advice about. That should be, uh, analyzed.
And that's why I'm saying it, it doesn't, it, the map that was shown to me, that's in our agenda report, doesn't apply to all properties in the city. Uh, it does apply to a pretty broad area, but we would have to analyze it, and, um, it came to my attention this evening that someone's, one of the council members' property is in the midst of it, so it's advisable...
But it doesn't apply to his property.
It doesn't apply to his property, but it applies...
Mayor, just a point of order, I don't think, um, any of us arguing with the city attorney about this is the answer.
Uh, you, you know, the, again, we don't, these are rules, um, that are state rules, um, and, you know, it, it's, again, given, I, I do believe, uh, there's an issue to be, uh, researched here, unfortunately, um, because, given the density, uh, that's possible within, I believe, five hundred feet of Mr., um...
Jones?
Jones's home, along Lake, along, you know, some of the, uh, TOD areas, um, you could have tremendous development now. Um, and so, yeah, I, I think in fairness to the city attorney, to Mr. Jones, maybe we should hold the matter and allow the research to, to go forward. Uh, it's not my preferred view, um, but we also want to make sure that we follow the rules and allow people, if they can't participate, to participate.
I agree with that, Air, that's why I, um, interrupted with the point of order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that would be prudent, at least to look at it, and maybe we determine that, uh, it is fine and all council members can participate.
Now, it has to, you know, this, this is a matter that has some urgency because of the development potential, um, one, uh, in such close proximity to, to many of our neighborhoods, particularly along Lake Avenue. Um, and, um, also because, uh, uh, we want to make sure that we take advantage of the grant reimbursement that's available if we submit for it by the end of the year. And so, this will have to come back, uh, sooner rather than later, certainly before the, before the end of the year.
Can I ask a question? Since we have, I don't know what, but, but Vice Mayor Rebus needs to excuse herself for me to ask a question.
I mean, if the advice to one council member is to recuse themselves while we look into this further, then I would also recuse myself, and I, I could state that on the record right now inside the room. So I, I, I own property within five hundred feet of the Northlake specific plan, so I'm recusing myself until we get further advice.
On the other item, the next item, but...
I think I have to come back and say that again, so I'll, I'll be back.
Ask your question quickly, Mr. Cole.
So this is a question for the city attorney, not about the recusal?
It's not the new one, I'm sorry.
We don't have a quorum in the room.
But for, this is the old teleconference rule, be, rule because it was posted, the location of the teleconference, uh, location is posted.
Okay, got it.
People are accused.
Right.
Is that right?
Because you don't, right.
So necessity, rule necessity?
The new just cause rules, et cetera, require five in the room, but the old teleconference rule just required a quorum participation.
Got it.
And we have still a quorum participating.
Okay, Mr. Cole?
So one of the recommendations, uh, from the staff is that, um, you come back within ninety days with...
With an ordinance.
Right. That was going to be one of my significant concerns. What would take ninety days?
We work with staff, and, um, they make analyses of various things, and based on that, we come back with an ordinance. So it's, it's usually, we get information from staff, and then we incorporate it in an ordinance, and I think, I'll turn to the planning director, um, for how much time may be needed for that.
Especially for this item?
Mayor, excuse me, I just want to interrupt again with a point of order. This is a discussion that all the members should participate in, i- if in fact, um, they're able to. So, do, do you need a motion to table pending the city attorney's advice? I'd be happy to make it.
I, I have the floor, you've interrupted with the point of order, I would like to, to clarify, and I'm trying to find out what the urgency of, of this is, and whether putting it over is going to cost us, you know, at least two or three weeks, because we don't have a meeting, uh, the December first is a special meeting, we don't have a meeting, I don't think, and...
I, I, I plan to bring it back by December eighth.
And actually, I think I had the floor, um, Councilmember Cole, but, you know, by all means, please go ahead.
Well, you, you, you have the right to make a point of order, you made your point of order, I wanted to clarify that...
Mr. Cole?
I'm just trying to find out how long this would, what kind of impact this would have, and I'm just asking a question about what the, um, why the need for ninety days, because the, the rules here are actually spelled out, what would be the, the need to take ninety days?
And maybe it wouldn't be, we'd have to turn to the planning department.
So we still have to write the standards in an objective form, so once we get approval of the, which is, we have the attachment that outlines all the key areas, the, the massing, the articulation, the solid to void, all of those areas, then we have to write the standards in an objective form and have those reviewed by the city attorney's office, that takes time. So, that's actually the hardest part, is getting it into a form that is truly objective, that meets the law, um, and so that's gonna take a little bit of time, the, the soonest we could probably do it is sixty days, but it, it, it takes time to do that work.
So, so I have a substantive comment on which I'll hold, because we, uh, in respect to Mr. Madison's, but, um, I one-hundred percent disagree with that approach. Um, we've spent three years on this, and, um, and to say, we're gonna have to now turn this over to lawyers to, to, to slice and dice it, um, is, is not an acceptable outcome to me, but we'll take that up on December eighth.
I, I don't think that's what, I, I, that's not what I interpreted in the comments.
I apologize if it came off that way. Staff is going to write the standards, but they have to be reviewed legally, the city attorney's office reviews all of our work, so they have to make sure that what we've written complies with law, but we are, the staff is writing the standards, not the attorneys.
And often, it'll say, return...
So after three years, we don't have the standards written? I think they're written, they're in Attachment B.
They're, they outline for the standards, but we don't have the exact language done, and, and that's how we do our work, when we come back with the ordinance, we actually have the final language, it's not until we have the ordinance is that we have the final language for all the amendments that we do.
The, the, the actual language is, uh, is a, is a part of the ordinance.
And often, it will say, return within sixty days, and often, we return sooner than sixty days, it just depends on the matter and what information we need to complete drafting of the ordinance. So it's possible it could be before that ninety-day period.
Yep. We take, again, we've taken three years on this, and I share the mayor's sense of urgency, we should get this done, um, before the end of the year and move forward, because projects that go through without these standards, um, are projects that we will be living with for decades.
We've got some big ones coming, uh, we've got applications for some very large projects, and so, um...
So it'd be appropriate to have a motion to continue this item until December eighth at six P.M.
Got a question before... And, uh...
I made a motion, Michelle, to table this pending your analysis, but would you prefer that motion?
Yes, yes.
So I'll, I'll accept that and make that my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton? I mean, how many public comments do we have on this item?
Three.
So, um, there will be an opportunity for the city attorney, my, my, my viewpoint of this, for the city attorney to give her guidance, um, to the councilmembers that had to recuse themselves, um, and we're gonna have this ordinance come back to us in ninety days anyways, so I don't see why we don't just go ahead and conduct the business, let people participate in public comment and, and take a vote on it. I mean, we could take a vote on it, right, I mean, we could, we could vote on this up or down, either way. So if those are outside right now, and this gets approved, ninety days, they have opportunity to put in their, if the city attorney says they could participate. So, I mean, ultimately, I don't support the motion, so I think that we should move forward with the work, so it doesn't have enough support to even... Well, the, the motion is to move, is to move forward with the, with... My suggestion would be for us, we have public here, and in two weeks is close to the holidays, we're asking our, our general public to come back because we couldn't figure this out. Well... Let, let me say this, um, there are three comment cards? Ten, he said, he said ten, oh, three. Okay, so, so one way, uh, to strike a balance here is maybe if people are here to give public comment and believe they may not be able to come back, give them an opportunity to give public comment on this issue tonight, table the matter, uh, to December eighth on the merits, um, but if people want to come back when the issues before us on the merits, they're, they're certainly free to do that, but we could certainly give them an opportunity in fairness to, to give some quick public comments now, if somebody wishes to. Those of you who submitted, why don't you read the names?
Uh, Jacob Pierce, uh, Michael Caravan, Amy DeValle, and then there was a young man who had, yes, Mr. Si.
So if, um, you would like to come back, um, you are welcome to, if you'd like to give your comments now, um, and have them read into the record, you're welcome to, uh, take a minute and a half and do that. Did you want to defer?
No, I'll, I'll, I'm here, so...
Okay. So, again, we're trying to strike a balance here, so if, if you, if you heard your name and you want to give your comments now as opposed to when the matter comes back, please step forward, but understand this will be your comments for, for the matter entirely.
Well, we would go in order, first it would be Jacob Pierce, then Michael Caravan, and then...
I'll defer till, uh, December eighth.
Okay. And then Michael Caravan?
I will also defer.
Mr. Si, you can go ahead. Minute and a half, go ahead.
Mr. Si? Okay, perfect. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Hampton, thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, um, I guess I'll repeat what I said, um, no doubt you've all heard, there's a massive homelessness crisis in the city, and quite frankly, the only way to fix it is to put roofs over people's heads, so anything we can do to remove barriers to that is helpful. So thank you to the staff for working three years on this and getting this, to this meeting, and whether you vote on this, I think, December eighth, I hope, please, please pass it and say yes to it. Fine, I do want to make a few points about the specifics of it, is, it is my understanding that this ordinance is requiring at least, I think, forty-five feet, um, whatever the technical term is, uh, for buildings, and I would hope that you allow these design standards to be extended to smaller building as well. Any roof, no matter how small, over someone's head would be better than no roof at all, and we all know we're being faced with fiscal difficulties. The more people are here, and the more properties that are built here, the larger our tax base.
You have thirty seconds.
All right, thank you. And, you know, if we're not going to be able to keep raising sales taxes, we can't keep selling bonds, then our only option really is to accelerate as much housing as possible, and these objective design standards are part of that goal, so at your December eighth meeting, I hope you all be able to vote yes on this and help remove another barrier to housing every single Pasadena, uh, in housing at all prices, all places, and all of all types. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Si.
And Amy DeValle would be the only, uh, remaining speaker, she's on line.
Ms. DeValle, did you want to make your comments now, or...
Yes.
Okay.
You, thank you, um, we're still on docket number sixteen, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I, I'm on, um, another call for North Mentor right now, so I'm trying to double up. I just wanted to say, I'm curious, because, um, the stretch of North Lake between Claremont and Washington and the Washington Park area, that is the southeast corner of Lake and Washington, is showing as, um, mixed, medium-mixed use for up to eighty-seven dwellings per unit. Does this supersede what is happening, um, in the docket number seventeen, North Lake?
Uh, ma'am, I think your comments are related to the specific plan, not this matter.
No, they, no, it is related to this, because in a docket sixteen, you have the City of Pasadena land use diagram showing that stretch of lake I just mentioned as medium-mixed use, it's showing in orange and red stripes, so... Um, I want to know if this is the, uh, amendment, or what's happening in docket number seventeen going to be the amendment where zoning, um, has been requested to amend, I don't know which one is going to be the final, uh, zoning designation.
The specific plan will go, so the land use diagram versus, you know, the interplay with the land use diagram with the specific plan.
Which would be updated afterwards, yes.
Yeah, and so...
Okay, thank you for confirming that.
Yeah. And so there's the interplay there, but the, ultimately, the specific plan governs. If there's, in the event that there's conflict or, mm-hmm, okay. So...
That completes public comment for those that wish to speak on item sixteen.
Yes. Um, okay, it's, sorry, everyone, but, um, I, I think the more prudent approach is the approach that we're taking, uh, allowing the city attorney to, uh, find the appropriate, to do the appropriate research and make a determination.
So, uh, it was, it was moved by Councilmember Madison to continue the public hearing to December eighth, twenty twenty-five, at six P.M. Did we have a second?
Yes.
I believe Councilmember Cole seconded that, didn't he? Thank you.
Okay.
And I just, Mayor, I would urge, uh, all of our colleagues, since I think we're down to the bare minimum, um, we're close, to support this...
we're close, to support this out of respect for our people that participate and whom I know have strong interest in this, just as we do.
Yeah, I I think it's fair to give them an opportunity if the city attorney determines.
And also, Mr. Councilmember Lyon will likely be in attendance as well.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Lyon will be here.
Take a roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones is absent due to recusal. Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas is absent due to recusal. Mayor Cordo?
Yes.
The matters continue to December 8th, 2025 at 6:00 P. M.
Okay.
Are we doing the same thing for item 17?
Welcome back.
Okay.
Your city council is hard at work. Why don't we? So is there is there any similar, I hate to even ask? Okay, so now we'll move on to.
Item 17.
Which is the specific plan?
Specific plan. Do you want me to open the public hearing first, or do you want to let the vice mayor recuse herself?
Yeah, why don't we?
Yes, thank you. So I am recusing myself from this item because I own property within 500 feet of the North Lake specific plan. Thank you. It's the same issue, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd be prepared to make the same motion if the city attorney believes analysis would be helpful.
No, we've already looked at that. This one's clear, unfortunately.
This one, this one is is clear. The the ambiguity in the other one is a little bit different. This one is a clear, under the state rules, this is a, this is clear because she's within 500 feet of the specific plan versus the other issue. So it's, it's, yeah, it's a lot clearer. So I don't agree with it, but under the rules, it's clear.
Madam City Attorney, did you examine the public generally exception?
For the North Lake specific plan?
Yes.
Well, we looked at potential bases for for her to participate and could not find any based on the advice letters from the FPPC with respect to specific plans. And it appears that her property is the only one among the council members who have a financial interest in the properties that might be affected.
Thank you.
So I'll open the public hearing. This is a time and place for the public hearing on the adoption of the North Lake specific plan. On October 27th, November 6th, and November 11th, the public hearing notice was published in the Pasadena Press. On October 27th, 2025, 7,031 copies of the public hearing notice were mailed. The city clerk's office received three letters in support of the city council approving the North Lake specific plan and/or providing comment on the matter. Two letters expressing concern with the staff recommendations, providing concerns related to various issues in the city. Two letters advocating for specific detailed amendments to the North Lake specific plan regarding street closures and/or zoning code amendments. The correspondence was posted online, distributed to the council as part of the record for this item.
Okay. So we'll.
We'll try again. Maybe we'll have better luck with this one. This is another item that we've spent a long time working on with a lot of participation from from the community and our and our planning commission. And we made presentations to various commissions over the years on this. So we're excited to bring the North Lake specific plan update tonight. I'll just hand it over to David Sinclair to give the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Item for the council tonight is a public hearing on the update to the North Lake specific plan. So the Plan Commission held a hearing in September and unanimously voted to recommend adoption of the plan with three changes that staff agrees with. Number one, changing the timeframe for implementation action P dash four to short term from medium term. And then for item two, effectively rezoning three properties on Mentor at Orange Grove and north of Orange Grove from residential single family at RM 16 up to basically an RM 32 zoning designation. And then number three, removing the parking PK overlay from two properties on Mentor just below Washington. They're currently used as part of the parking lot for the block five commercial development. So how do we get here? So as Director Page mentioned, we've been in a process here for quite a while since 2015 with the last update to the general plan layout element. And then in particular, this project really got going about two years ago with the Plan Commission, who held six study sessions to discuss various options and topics of the plan, as well as their own Plan Commission Polygram Subcommittee, which met in 2024. As I mentioned, the commission had their hearing in September, and then we're here now at the final step at city council now in November 2025. So what's the recommendation? So just to touch briefly touch on where this this corridor is for everyone's edification. It's North Lake between what? Elizabeth at the north, down to Maple at the south. It's predominantly a commercial corridor. And the southern portion roughly around Boylston is within a half mile of the Metro A Line station. And as you see here on the on the the map, the area is surrounded significantly by a number of local and national registered landmark districts. So the vision statement or kind of our guiding principle statement, and I'll read it here briefly. North Lake will be a vibrant and visually cohesive corridor, weaving together several distinct pedestrian oriented districts that complement and build upon the cultural and architectural history of the community and the surrounding neighborhoods. So we've divided the the corridor into four distinct subareas from north to south. Washington Place, Elizabeth to Claremont, Vineyard Gardens, Claremont to Mountain, North Lake Village, Mountain to just above Orange Grove. And the remainder down to Maple is the Lake Station District. So I'll touch now briefly what these areas are kind of vision to be. So the Washington Place District, again, the most northern section of the the corridor. We're talking about an active walkable neighborhood serving gateway, pedestrian oriented commercial character, the addition of marked crosswalks, reduced crossing distances, various other pedestrian connectivity and safety elements. And finally, acknowledging its adjacency to the neighborhoods to the east, west, and north, to have appropriate transitions to those neighborhoods. The next subarea moving south, excuse me, Vineyard Gardens, Claremont to Mountain. We're talking about a more residential character. You may recall that the the buildings in here, a lot of converted houses with more generous setbacks and versus the more commercial character north of Claremont. So this is the more new development with a architecture that references styles such as California bungalow, Mission Revival, middle traditional styles. We're talking about reuse of buildings as well. And again, increased setback areas that have additional sidewalk amenities, improvements, and more public realm focus. Further south now to the North Lake Village area, this has traditionally been a commercial only corridor. With the Plan Commission's urging, it's now vision to be a commercial mixed use corridor with housing opportunities, enhanced streetscape. The revitalization of underutilized land required that, again, that development is appropriately scaled to the neighborhoods to the east and the west, and that this area would support the implementation of the city's North Lake Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Enhancement Plan through sidewalk improvements and high visibility crosswalks or crossings. Finally, the fourth district, the Lake Station District, this is our most intense area of the southern end nearest to the Metro A Line station. This would have a higher intensity mix of office, retail, and multi-family housing in the southern gateway to the North Lake corridor. This would have more opportunities for publicly accessible open space, including piseos in this area. This would have minimal setbacks to establish a street wall, and any setbacks will be used for sidewalks, amenities, or other improvements for the public realm. So some of the key provisions in the recommended plan fall into two categories, expanded housing opportunities and economic vitality. For housing opportunities, this is now about allowing more housing in more areas of the corridor, particularly between Orange Grove and Mountain, focusing most of the density of the southern end nearest the the 210 freeway, Metro A Line station. And that new development shall provide for private and common open spaces as part of their developments for the residents. And having upper floor, having setbacks and upper floor step backs that again have those transitions between new development and the neighborhoods to the east and the west of the corridor. Economic vitality, we're looking here at, again, a wider range of neighborhood friendly commercial uses in the corridor, simplifying parking standards to make it easier for small businesses to establish themselves here, focusing commercial uses on the at the ground floor in the Washington and Villa nodes. And then elsewhere in the plan, allowing but not requiring ground for commercial uses in mixed use developments. And then again, reducing those requirements. So density, housing, a big issue for the corridor and citywide. So on the left hand side is the currently adopted land use diagram, which shows a variety of densities for housing throughout the area. You'll note the pink area between Mountain and Orange Grove is low commercial, which allow without no housing as the rules today. What's proposed is a variety of housing now throughout the corridor. So I'm going to focus on these two areas and kind of before and after. On the left hand side, this shows that the highest density at the Washington Lake node is 87 units per acre in that that kind of dark orange color with smaller areas of 48 units per acre to the northeast. Sorry, northwest, excuse me, 32 to the northeast, and then 16 directly to the east of that. And again, that zero housing opportunity down between Mountain and Orange Grove. What's proposed now would be, as shown in red, would be density reductions, and blue would be density increases. So this shows here that the A7 units per acre at the Lake-Washington corridor would be reduced to do a variety of densities, including the highest would be 64 units per acre at the Food for Less site. Forty eight units per acre above that, 32 to the west of the Washington Theater, and then a small increase of from 16 to 30 units per acre for the area between on Washington between Catalina and Mentor on the south side of the street. And then the the biggest change, obviously, is that density increase from zero to 40 units per acre between Mountain and Orange Grove. Building heights, some changes here as well. Roughly in the the first bullet point here is 51 feet, and I apologize. My note here says 48 it will be, so I got my my label wrong. I apologize. So the gist is the currently allowed height right now is that purple color on the left hand side of 42 feet. There'd be a decrease down to 39 feet, a minimal decrease for the northwest, northeast, and southeast corners of Lake and Washington, and a increase from 42 feet up to, again, my bad, 51 feet, where it says 48 for the Food for Less site. Down closer to the station, this would be an increase of three feet from 48 to 51 feet overall height, and then an increase of 30 to 39 for the rest of the plant area. That's between Claremont and Orange Grove and north of Rio Grande. So I've mentioned several times setbacks and step backs for for development. So for street setbacks in this diagram here, we're talking about for most of Lake and Orange Grove area, a range in that kind of yellow gold color, a range of three foot minimum to a five foot minimum, how that works for the developer to make it fit. For interior streets and areas north of Rio Grande, kind of that teal color, blue color, that'd be a range of five to 10 feet for a building setback again from the street. And then on Lake between Claremont and Mountain, that kind of that purple color, purple color, yeah, that would be about a range of 10 feet to 20 feet, a more generous, kind of less commercial character for that that area. And then when adjacent to a an R district, a residential district in the in the area, whether it's to the side or to the rear, automatically of a 15 foot setback is shown by this diagram in the lower left. And then in encroachment plane, where the upper floors cannot go past that red line. So that's drawn at a 15 feet above the ground at the property line angled in at 45 degrees. So again, a building cannot cross that line. The idea being that the new development along along Lake would not loom over housing to their rear or their side. The plan also addresses a number of other standards, which I will not go over tonight. It's a long list. Things like historic adjacency, modulation, ground floor furnitures, safe structures, and a whole variety of things that are also in the plan. So a big focus of the Plan Commission was the public realm, the area between the buildings, the sidewalks, the streets, the medians, and so on. So to that end, the commission really wanted to emphasize that area and really put the effort into it. So they formed a subcommittee in April of 2024, and that committee met with city staff and community members to really engage and almost do like a charrette of sorts, charrette of sorts, to really come forward with recommendations for the city to consider. So they came forward with a number of goals, objectives, and policies, which the full commission considered in November 2024. These focused on things like a sense of place, attracting businesses, a streetscape plan is a big for this this group, mobility options, reduced parking, and the whole slew of things. So how were these added to the plan? Well, the goals were basically recharacterized as community priorities, as shown here on the right in chapter one. The objectives became implementation actions in chapter seven. And the policies were added as a variety of either visions, goals, or policies in chapter three, guiding principles in chapter five, and or actions in chapter seven. So they were spread throughout the entire plan. And as an example here, some of the elements of a great street, how can we make Lake into a great street? Adding things like attractions and activities, active street edges, ongoing management is a big issue, design for diverse uses, a whole variety of things that are needed to make Lake Avenue or really any street into a great street. Other elements of the public realm are things like minimum sidewalk width or also as well zones where where you can have people walking or dining or how to make use of those areas of the sidewalks, parkways and street trees, landscape medians are a big issue as well, as well as stormwater management, how can we use the public right of way to, you know, basically capture more water, filter water, and so on. Another big issue for the Plan Commission was drive through businesses and how to deal with them in the future. So, oops, I'm a little too far here. So as the council may be aware, since 1997, new drive through businesses are not allowed in North Lake corridor at all, anywhere. In 2007, as part of the amendment to the North Lake plan, it was amended to include an exception for the existing drive through businesses, those that were legally established or not performing at that point. They could be demolished and rebuilt with a CUP, provided the size of the new building was not larger than the building that was demolished. Additionally, the number of queueing positions and service windows could be increased also through a CUP. But again, no building size increase. So there are six permitted drive through businesses, and they're all between Mountain and Orange Grove. Of those, two took advantage of the rebuilt CUP option, McDonald's and Chick-fil-A, and the remaining four had been remodeled, paint, cosmetics, and so on. So the commission considered four options for how to deal with these in the future. One is no change. The rules on the books today are the rules going forward. A drive through can be demolished and rebuilt, but not enlarged through a CUP, queueing positions, and so on. So again, no change there. One advantage is the city can impose site site specific conditions on that application. Number two, regulate them like any other use in the city that was legally established, but is no longer allowed in that location, where they can be altered and or expanded, which is key, they're expanded with a minor CUP. Again, the city could establish conditions of approval on that application, on that that on that project. Number three, the North Lake plan already has a list of uses that cannot be expanded or altered or rebuilt. Add it, add drive throughs to that list. They still could do minor street changes or maintenance improvements. They could do, you know, new branding, paint color signage, landscape, and those kinds of things, but they can add to it more significantly. But however, there's no entitlement, no CUP process, so therefore the city could not impose conditions on an application or on a project. So what we came, so the fourth option the commission considered is to allow design alterations to the building, no expansion of the use, and more importantly, no rebuilding, no demolition rebuilding. So again, you cannot expand the building size, number of windows, senior area, and or move it on to adjacent site. You could only do, any expansion would be the number of queuing lanes or spaces and only if you improve site circulation and only through a CUP. So it's not as strict as number three, not as lenient as number one, and has a little more teeth than number two. So the recreation from the commission and staff is number four. Again, minor alteration. Again, minor alterations to the building, no demolition, no expansion. Um, that's a recommendation. And again, through that process, the city could impose conditions on the operation of a, of a project. Implementation, so we've done this plan, we have this great document, it's going to be on a shelf, what are we going to do with this thing? Well, we've got to implement it. So it's money and time and effort. So chapter seven is dedicated to implementation of the plan through a variety of programs. Or in this case, implementation actions divided into three categories, amendments. Like for example, um, you know, amend, uh, zoning map, change the zoning, that's one of those things. Things about infrastructure, mobility, sustainability, things that address community identity, signage, programming and public art. So those are the categories that are in chapter seven of the North Lake plan, which obviously involve monies as well. So recommendation. So in summary, uh, we are asking that the commission, the, the commission, the city council, excuse me. Adopt the addendum to the general plan E I R from twenty fifteen. Uh, make the fines to approve the general plan land use map amendment. Adopt the plan itself, amend the zoning map, amend the zoning code text to adopt the changes that are in attachment B, the plan itself. Um, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendments. Adopt a resolution approving the general, the recommended North Lake plan itself. And finally return with an ordinance to effectuate all of this stuff into the zoning code. So it's clear and concise and implement, and implementable to a developer. And with that, thank you for your time, we're here for any questions you may have.
Okay, um. Questions, comments, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, uh, thank you for the presentation, um, and to all the community members that participated in the process. By the way, I noticed, um, throughout the slides, I saw, um, a cameo from, um, council member Rick, uh, Rick Cole. Um, so I, I think you're trying to look for a vote in favor of this plan from him, not his plan. Um, the question I had was.
So I was a planning commissioner, Mr.?
Oh, well, you were, you were, you were on the slides and so that's all I was mentioning. Got a cameo appearance. Uh, uh, building height, um, slide eighteen. So this is the height that is allowed to not exceed this height. Or should we be honest with the residents and say that because this is a transit oriented location, that the height could be increased? And so what would that height level be if someone, um, requested a variance for height? What is the max, is there a max?
I'll, I'm, I'll start and then the staff can jump in if they'd like, but I think we've been very transparent with the public throughout our specific plans after.
Not saying that you're not, I'm just saying in the presentation, we're seeing four or two.
It's important that, it's, but it's an important point because when it comes to density, when it comes to F A R, when it comes to height, this is before S B seventy nine even. Um, you know, we had, that's what started the objective design standard conversation was we were, you know, superseded by state law. And we had to go with the highest densities in the general plan. And so, you know, we plan for what we want and, um, but we've been very honest that someone can come in if it's a housing project. So if it's a housing project and they qualify with their, um, density, the bright density bonuses, they, they can ask for additional height. Depending on how much affordability is in the project, but they could get up to two, two more stories with depending on the, the.
Yeah, it really depends. Our, our experience has been that most applicants ask for an extra floor, which in this case is about an extra twelve feet at the upper.
That's what we're seeing coming in, but they can ask for height, it's not, it's not unlimited unless it's a hundred percent affordable.
I guess my question is what is the maximum that someone could ask? And I, I saw three stories higher from the bat.
That, yeah, so. If it's one percent affordable, they could ask for three more stories.
And that would.
But that would be, sorry, that would be within, um, within a radius of the metro station.
Okay.
Not along the entire length of the corridor.
For, so.
For the three stories.
So closer to.
Orange Grove.
Orange Grove, just north of Orange Grove.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be a radius from the metro station at the freeway.
Okay, so that forty eight would be equivalent to. Is it, what is it, ten feet per?
Actually fifty one under the plan.
Oh, sorry, fifty one, I apologize, sorry, I'm looking, my, my, my cup was in front of that, so.
Yeah, so that would be like a four to five story building. So then if it was a hundred percent affordable project, then you could request, um, up to three stories increase.
Three stories more, so that.
Correct, and that would be from any metro station.
Every story is what, ten feet or it's twelve?
Twelve, about.
Probably an average of ten feet for residential.
So we just add, um, thirty six to this number, okay. Um, I think that that should be a part of the presentations so that moving forward for all of our specific plans. To let us know and let the community know what they could expect if someone decides to go one hundred percent affordable. Well, or even if they, if they don't, there's an impact. If even it's not one hundred percent, what would be, it's a sliding scale or what, what's?
Yeah, like Louis was saying, what we're seeing is one story of additional height that people are, are asking for, um, with their density bonus. That, that we have that level of affordability that they're asking for an additional story is more common.
We, we, yeah, to, to clarify, the, we have had projects that are at the, you know, fifty percent to a hundred percent affordable. And we have not had any that have requested a three story increase.
Okay, but there is a potential of a three story increase.
The state law does afford that, that's a statewide, um, bill. Um, what, what you would typically, again, since it's statewide and proportion wise, if you're doing, let's say, a twenty story building in San Francisco. Then that would probably request a three story increase, but a, you know, five story building would probably only request a one story increase.
Okay, I, I appreciate the explanation. I, I just think that, um, for the presentation purposes, uh, for anyone who's watching. For their love, to set their level of expectation, to understand what the, what we are saying is fifty one feet. If you just come in, this is fifty one feet, we're not going to ask you many questions, but you could request a variance for more and I think that's.
It's not even a variance, it's a waiver.
So it's not even a variance, it's not even entitled, it's just entitled.
They're entitled to ask for that.
So they're entitled for more. And I think that that piece should just say, we should have it as a asterisk on the side that says, you know, but could go up to three stories. In history, we've only, and historically, we've only seen an increase of one story. I think that's, that's fair.
I think that's fair and we can add a note, a footnote, um, to the diagrams that said with state law, there's additional height that can be requested up to three stories. We can figure that out, but we could add a footnote to the diagrams in the plan. I think that's something we could easily do.
Not requested, it's, it's entitled, it's that they, we have no say. And that's the problem with S B seventy nine, S B nine, and, you know, who knows what comes after that. Is we don't have a say as a city council, as a city. And so someone could come in and say, this is what you will do. Um, and there's nothing we can do. And that's the problem that you're highlighting, Mr. Hampton.
And that's the piece that I think we just need to, you know, also explain to our residents, um, what the reality is.
And, and, you know, the, the waiver issue, uh, that's, that was the old legislation that, you know. Um, that allowed those waivers and only, and people have only requested one, one additional floor, it sounds like, for the most part. But under S B seventy nine, it literally is blowing the roof off. And, you know, that legislation is going to take effect January first. And I, I, uh, July, I'm sorry, you're right, correct, in July. Um, and, you know, then, um, I think there'll be a, a different approach on the part of developers. Particularly along places like North Lake Avenue, uh, that are ripe for development. Um, and within the transit quarter, even right here around city hall, because we have the gold line just right over here. And so you can expect to see concrete canyons being proposed throughout all of these, uh, transit oriented developments. Um, throughout the city, East Pasadena, uh, West Pasadena. Potentially the ditch area, uh, if the, if metro goes forward with their transit.
I think we're on the North Lake.
Well, we are on the North Lake, so, so I'm talking about the impacts potentially. And so I think we're going to have to take that issue up, otherwise. Um, this specific plan and every other one virtually will be impacted. So, um, uh, Mr. Hampton, were you finished?
No, I have a couple more questions, I appreciate that, um, though. Um, the community benefits, um. I hear from residents all the time, say, you know, they built this brand new building and, you know, we got a wider sidewalk or. We maybe got a new sidewalk paved in front of the building that, what are the community benefits? Um, and maybe this is not connected to the specific plan. And so maybe I should ask for this to be a, another topic for us. But community benefits, benefits could these developers, um, support and how could they support our community? In Tokyo, right, every building that is built has a community space within those buildings. Um, for the newer buildings, I don't know about the older buildings, um, a lot of, um, the buildings in Osaka, all throughout Japan, it's not Tokyo. Um, all throughout, they have space on different levels of the building for community space. What are we doing as a far, as, as it goes to these developments as, as the mayor mentioned, you know, there's a potential of a lot of development happening. And I think that the developers that want to come into the community, if they want to be a part of the community, they need to open the doors to their buildings for the community. And so this may be a conversation for a whole nother topic for all building in the city of Pasadena. But I, I do think that there needs to be more community benefits and I hear those at those specific plan, um, meetings from our residents regularly. So you don't need to elaborate on that one. Um, the last question I have, um, is, or actually two, um, one is, um, funding, that's another topic. We have a lot of specific plans that have no dollars connected to them. And if we want to entice this development that we're putting these plans on the shelf for. We need to actually invest in these spaces and now we've invested with these plans, don't get me wrong. Um, but without actually something tangible of the road, uh, us making, you know, improvements, whether it be a median or planting more trees. Or doing something to improve these specific plant areas. These are going to be plans on a shelf until someone decides that they want to develop. But if they see investment from the city, which we saw in Old Town, or if you, not from Pasadena, you call it Old Pasadena. Um. There was investment there, we put the investment in so that enticed people to buy buildings and develop and do different things. So I, I think that there's more on that top, that piece. And I, I don't know if that is a whole nother topic for us, but, but moving forward for all of our specific plans, we have to have some funding. Or some sort of funding mechanism that goes along with it that says, this is what we're going to do to invest in this community. Um, so that these plans aren't just plans, but there's something that other organizations, other people will decide, I want to invest in this area as well. The other thing is, um, and this is actually a question, um, the drive through. Um, so you proposed item four, I don't know what slide that was. And I just wanted to try to understand the drive through piece. And so the planning depart, planning commission, um, proposed number, item four, or the suggestion. And this was a planning commission, but what was the community's feedback on, um, drive throughs? Or do we have feedback from the meetings? What was the feedback on drive throughs from the meetings that you've had?
This was a topic of a lot of conversation at the, at the commission meetings. Um, and when we, when we had the first study session, we presented a few ideas and the commission said, go back and do some more work. And think through some different options. So when we came back and we had, we didn't have option number four, um, we had option, I recall one, two and three. And so we went and we kind of came up with this modified version of number four, if we thought that three was a little too strict. And so that's what we presented to the commission and the commission was in support of that. And we didn't hear any objection from the community to, um, to what the staff recommendation was. I know we had some, I know Commissioner Cole has some, um, comments on this that he'll, that he'll interject. But, um, we did not have, uh, comment against this proposal from the community, if that's.
Okay.
What you're getting at.
So I would just like to say that the presentation was amazing. The first part of it was talk about how a community can be walkable, um, how to engage in the community. Um, I think that drive throughs may be, um, counterproductive to actually having community. Now, I go to drive through as a father from time to time, right? Because it's just easy, um, to do that, which is literally time to time, because at the price they charge for drive throughs, I could just do that at the house. Um, um, so it is just really convenient. But when I think about community and I think about getting out of my car, even if I'm going to a walk up window. I have to engage, oh, I actually don't have to, I mean, I could just not say anything to people. Um, but it's always easier and nicer to engage with people that are there for the same exact thing, food, whatever that may be or whatever it is. Um, you coffee, drink, whatever, they're, they're there for that. I think that the drive throughs take away that experience. And I think that if we are, um, looking to, um, really engage our community, especially having a more walkable community. A, a walk up window is great, we've already passed, we've, we've done that, but a drive through is counterproductive. That's just my feedback on, on that piece. Um, so I would be supportive of, um, number, just so you know, I'd be supportive of number three or number four. Um, but I wouldn't be supportive of opening up for more drive throughs on the corridor. And I know that you guys weren't as well, but it just seemed counterproductive to the presentation.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that the commission agrees as well as staff that there's an over concentration of drive throughs. And we'd like to see other uses besides the drive throughs. They're popular, um, they get those, they're the reason that they're there and they're doing a good business, they're popular. But they're not the, the best land use that we would like to see there, we'd like to, you know, see something else. So we've, what, something we did with this plan, which is different, is we introduced housing as an allowed, um, land use type. So you could never do housing here before, so that's a big change is now we're allowing housing. It was zero, the density was zero and housing wasn't allowed in this, in the area where the drive throughs are and we're, um, introducing housing. So we're hoping that that will be an impetus, um, to maybe see that those properties would be turned over as housing is the highest and best use. We might see mixed use and maybe some of those, what are drive throughs become restaurants on the ground floor instead. Um, so that's one change that we're making here that we haven't in the past with other plans. And I think, um, part, part of the struggle with the difference between three and four was having to accept that if you go with the strictest standard. Um, you could have a drive through that, that is in deteriorated condition until it eventually goes away. Because they're not able to do, if let's say Starbucks has a new concept in ten years, and so they're changing out all the Starbucks everywhere. And, but we're going to say, no, you can't do that for this Starbucks because we don't allow that, we don't allow the exterior modifications. You can only change your signage, you can't, you know, change the reforms and change the architecture. Um, it has to look like an old Starbucks and then, and living with that, but the benefit is that it eventually goes away. Um, and so the, the option number four that staff introduced does allow, we, we recognize that extends the life of these. You know, it's gonna, they're going to be there longer. So, um, and they would be able to remodel, they just couldn't get any bigger. You can't expand the seating area, you can't expand the queuing lanes, but you could remodel them, um, on the exterior. So, and then we can also, um, require a conditional use permit and impose conditions if there's some operating, um, characteristics that we can't do for the nonconforming now. So there was a lot of conversation about this, so, um, and there's some nuances, but.
So number four gives us more control than.
Yeah.
What we have currently.
Yeah.
The, if I could just, uh, jump in and just provide a little bit of context. The fast food node as it, we described it for quite some time, was intentional. Uh, and it was intentional because residents on both sides of, uh, of Lake Avenue. Um, on the east and then of the west, uh, were concerned, bungalow heaven on one side and, and, um, Washington Square on the other side. Were concerned that if the, if we allowed housing. And as an alternative to the fast food restaurants, then we would get major development. Um, in close proximity to the neighborhoods. Uh, and with waivers such as, you know, the setbacks, again, delivered to us by the state. With, um, density waivers, with, uh, setback waivers. The residents pressed for and the council ultimately accepted that we would not allow housing along that fast food node. And press the, the density further south, closer to the gold line. Um, and, you know, and the result, the theory was ultimately they'll, they'll, you know, go away. Um, but they, I don't believe that's going to be the case. Um, and if it is, then think of places like C V S.
and some of the other um, locations that are immediately adjacent to people's backyards. Um, and the implications involving SB nine, um, which, can you put the map up?
Uh, yeah.
The SB nine map?
The SB seventy-nine?
Yeah, seventy-nine, thank you. You're going to get, you can see how far up it goes. Um, and it's going to go we- well past uh,
one here, if that helps.
Yeah.
It's a little simple map.
Right. So you can see how far up it'll go beyond Orange Grove, the impacts of SB seventy-nine and the high density and all the issues that you were talking about. And so um, if, if those fast food places are replaced in this node, um, and this is that exists now, I'm expecting other changes from Sacramento, then you can see the impacts um, if we, by allowing the housing. So all that was debated, discussed in prior iterations of the specific plan and in this iteration as well. But not the SB seventy-nine uh, impacts because it wasn't born.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe we want to pull up the density slide, David. Um, because we didn't get opposition to introducing housing this time around, you know, um, to this area. And we made adjustments to some of the areas above and reduce some of those. So we can adjust densities within the plan boundary as long as we don't um, decrease the, the capacity. So we had, we heard some concerns about the density further north. Um, can you pull up the density one, David, sorry? Um, yeah. And, and so in some of those areas, we lowered the density and then we added the capacity to the area where the, this, that you were just talking about where the drive throughs are. So that was what David was walking you through, these northern areas up above here, we reduced some of those um, based on some comments from neighbors. And then we added some capacity down here and we added some where the, the uh, lake station was. So we were able to make up for that. So we heard the concerns this time were a little bit further north and not so much to adding the housing where the, the drive throughs were.
Yep. We're going to see it. Um, was, was that it, Mr. Hampton? That's it, thank you. All, all serious issues, thank you. Um, Mr. Cole?
Um, I think we're on questions, correct?
Yes.
Because we've had a fair amount of substantive discussion.
Well, we, I mean, we can.
I'm just clarifying, I'm not being critical.
In the interest of time.
Just asking, just asking a question, what are we doing here? Because um,
That's, that is the question Mr. Hampton was asking. What's the state doing here?
Um, so uh, this slide, I actually, is one I wanted to look at. Um, the um, southwest corner of Lake and Washington, is that um, in our housing element as a candidate site? Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm looking to staff, I think it is. Yeah, okay, they're going to look it up, council member, while we're talking.
Just, I would like to know whether we um, whether we promised eighty-seven units to the acre in our housing element or not. So that's a question. Let me see. I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't, I, I, All right. Let's see what the staff has to say, but I, I don't recall
Okay.
that we did that.
Um, that's my only question, I have some, some comments. I will say at this stage, um, I'm very pleased with the staff work. It's taken forever, but that's not their fault. It uh, and, you know, we're, we're ten years into specific plans and we still have two more to go. I am going to talk um, when we get into discussion about particularly what Mr. Hampton talked about, which is implementation. I think that's key because this is a very good plan. Uh, but the question is, will it lead to very good results? And so I want to focus on that. So um, that's my question.
Um, Mr. Masuda? All right, Mr. Jones and Mr. Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for the explanation on the plan. What, what dictates the differences in setbacks here? And was there a lot of public comment on, on uh, on setbacks?
We did not receive a lot of public comment on setbacks, it's based on the zone. So we have like neighborhood commercial, for example, um, or we have neighborhood mixed use. And so depending on what the uses are, then the setbacks are different. So for example, there's an area where there's some older homes that are also used for businesses. That's an area where we have a greater setback along Lake Avenue to line up with the development that's there for the older homes. A block north of that, it transitions and so then you can, you can build that closer to the street. So it's looking at what's existing on, on the street, where those buildings are at, what's the likelihood for that pattern to continue? Um, do you want to continue that pattern? Do you want to bring it further back? So it's looking at the existing uses and then making some adjustments. But we didn't have a lot of uh, concern over the setbacks on, on, along the, along Lake.
Okay, okay. And uh, is there still a, a city rule or a planning rule on how far the distance between drive throughs have to be?
In, in some of the specific plans, like East Colorado, there is a separation requirement for new drive throughs.
Yeah.
So, but since this specific plan doesn't allow new drive throughs, this wasn't really debated. And there wasn't one in the past of requirement, which is why they're all clustered together in one area.
Interesting, okay. And let's see if I have another one here. And, okay then, why are the projects that are eighty thousand square feet or more, you, are, they have the requirement of uh, the publicly accessible open space? And, and why not smaller projects?
So that's um, a standard that we've carried through all of our specific plans. And really you have to have a certain amount of site area before you can have usable publicly accessible open space. And if you think of it as some examples that we have around here might be um, like Plaza Las Fuentes over here, um, where the Westin is, Paseo Colorado, those types of things are publicly accessible open space. So they tend to, they need to be bigger sites to be able to support the land area to dedicate for a really usable publicly accessible open space. It wouldn't work on smaller lots, the development envelope.
I see. Uh, Mayor, those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Masuda. Uh, Mr. Madison, and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, followed by Mr. Madison, then Mr. Cole.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks Jennifer, to you and your team for this presentation and for the work and to all of our community volunteers. You know, I, it's, this is going to lead to a question, but growing up, I would always ask my mom, why does South Lake look different from North Lake? And so I guess, I just want to know, could you pinpoint, just a, this is about a vision question. Could you pinpoint any specific policies or standards within this document that would help close that experience gap for like the next generation of children coming up Pasadena?
I think one of the main differences is just the function of the street. So if you look at the, how much volume of traffic is on South Lake versus North Lake, the width of street, the function of the street, that part of that, they just function differently, that's, that's part of it. Um, but I think you're getting at an equity question, which is about investment and equity. And um, I think with this plan, one of the exciting things about this plan is the amount of time and effort that was spent on the public realm. And I think the Planning Commission gets credit for that in their subcommittee because they said, we need to, we need to put a pause on this and we need to really pull out the public realm and look at how we're handling the street and the public spaces and what we want for the community. What is the experience for someone who's walking, for someone who's biking, for someone who's driving? All of those things need to be focused on. And so we put a pause and we spent multiple meetings, I'm sure you'll hear from some of our, our public commenters tonight. Um, and a subcommittee was formed on developing a much more robust public realm. Um, I think the questions that, and the points that Councilmember Hampton and Cole and others are making is, is there money supporting that? And so that's a policy question outside of the planning document that, that, you know, but in terms of the work that was put in um, to set the foundation, that's, that's in this plan. And that's what's exciting about this plan. And we want to develop a streetscape program after that. And then the other part of it is you have bids and you have, you know, you have businesses that have invested and they spend a lot of time on their, their um, business improvement districts. And we had um, someone from the Playhouse District come to one of the Planning Commission meetings. Gina came and said, I'm willing to help, but you're going to need to form a bid and there's a lot of work that needs to go into this with economic development and partnership. And um, it's not, it takes years to do that. But part of that is getting the investment from the businesses as well. So there's, there's, you know, side, there's the public investment, there's investment from the businesses. Um, but part of it is place making and making it a place that people want to spend time in and want to visit those places, right? So you want to walk there and you want to have those experiences. So um, I think this plan, that's what is different, is that really robust public realm chapter that hopefully we're laying the foundation to do this future work on.
I, I really appreciate your response on that and then saying that this was equity driven. So I appreciate that. And, and part of that, I have a few questions, but part of that was what tools are in this plan to help, I guess, retain some of those legacy small businesses in the area?
Yeah, staff may have, they can probably add more than I can, but I know, for example, we um, lessen the parking restrictions so that the parking isn't a barrier. Um, we also have made some changes to the ground floor furniture requirements. And like for retail, it's not required in all the spaces now, it's optional. And then looking at the depth, like we have some requirements for commercial spaces, like you have to have a minimum depth. And sometimes that's the barrier because it's too deep for certain uses. And so we've, we've loosened those standards to try to make it easier for maybe a smaller business to come in in a smaller space and get started. And they don't have, you know, the, the ability to pay rent on a space and go back thirty-five feet. You know, they can do something that's a smaller space and subdivide. So we were looking at um, just where retail is going in general after COVID and trying to be cognizant of that in this plan. And so there's some changes to some of our development standards that we've made to hopefully try to um, encourage small businesses to, to either be able to stay or to locate there.
All right, that's a great response, thank you. And then the last question is, I think it hits on what Councilmember Hampton and Cole and I believe Masuda have brought up as well. Is just the implementation. I mean, obviously it's not in this plan, but are you already thinking of what could be fully funded within the first year or two? Um, what could be partially funded and what just can't be funded within the next five years?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've said this as we bring the plans forward, but you know, in all fairness, in the past, the implementation chapter is kind of the boring chapter that nobody looks at. And we're, we're focusing on all these things because these are the changes in the development standards. And people are, are concerned about heights and FAR, but the implementation chapter is really important because it outlines what are the actions that are needed to implement the plan.
Right.
And so um, something that we've done, um, I think we're getting better at each plan that we do and we've, we've worked a lot with the Planning Commission. They'd have some great suggestions on how we could do better um, as staff in communicating implementation and making sure that the plans don't just sit on the shelves. And so we've committed to, um, we report back annually on the progress of the plant, the new plans that were adopted. Every year we, we pull out the implementation chapter and we report out our progress. And if there's no progress, we say there's no progress and this is why. Um, or if there's something that's been done, we're able to explain what's been done. Um, we're also making a connection between the CIP and some of the implementation actions. And so we identify in the chapter if there's already a CIP project identified for that and what the funding would be. Or if not, if there's nothing there in the CIP. So then when we go to future CIP efforts, they can go back to the specific plans and they can, they can pull from that. Because, you know, while it's frustrating because these plans are, it's everything on paper, nothing's being done, but it's laying the groundwork so that you've got community buy-in. You don't have to go back and do that, you can just hit the ground running if you want to include it as a CIP project or you want to go for grant funding. You've, 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 again, laid that foundation and we already know that this is what the community wants. So you save time in, in that aspect. Um, so the implementation chapter has near term and medium term. So it's got timeframes, it has who the responsible departments are, um, what the potential funding sources could be. And um, and so it's, it's laying the groundwork if we have the investment to be able to um, move it forward and then do some reporting on that for transparency.
And, and then last question to follow up on that, I, there is a term in here talking about living room experience for the specific plan. It's, I guess, are there any projects that staff is, or the city professionals would recommend that we could address immediately within the first year?
Yeah, I think um, something that we're working on separately and outside of the specific plans and our next year's work program is going to be about place making. And there's some low hanging fruit. And so there's some things that can be done that don't cost a lot of money and you don't have to redesign the street. But maybe there's things that can be done through place making and that can be done through signage and that can be done through um, other streetscape improvements that um, could at least start the, the place making process and give it some identity. And so we're working on that and that's in our implementation chapter. Um, but we're, we're looking at a broader um, place making program that would be codified in the zoning code, citywide. Um, and so that we could then, we can identify place making features that can be on the private side or the public side and they're incorporated into the zoning code. Getting at, I think what Councilmember Hampton was asking about community benefits, then we would require um, projects to incorporate place making features into their, um, into their projects. And it's something that everybody knows that's what it is and this is what's happening. And it can be art and it can be benches and it can be all kinds of different things, public spaces. But um, we're going to be working separately on that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that is, is addressing that low hanging fruit. Because we already know the plan identifies there's some inconsistencies um, within sidewalk and missing shade in parts of the area. And then maybe that's something we could quickly identify and address. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We, we do have uh, fourteen public commenters. Um, Mr. Madison?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Jennifer, thanks very much for the, uh, all of the work you and your staff have put into this, it's evident. And uh, you know, specific plans aren't by their nature sort of predictive, right? They're aspirational. Uh, we've had experiences in our city where specific plans haven't worked out the way we thought they would for a variety of reasons, often because the property owners uh, have an inflated sense of the value that the specific plan has uh, added to their, their parcels. But um, I want to ask you a couple of questions. I think, you know, on the drive through, it, it's tricky because there's clearly a strong demand in the community for those. Did I hear you kind of concur with that?
Yes, I'd agree.
Yeah, and uh, I mean, I look through and I see, you know, I have a Burger King on, in my district, it's got a drive through. And uh, it, it is not popular in the, in the district and yet it's well trafficked, right? So it, it's working for some folks. I want to ask about these questions that came up about SB seventy-nine and, and SB nine. You know, I, we should, we ought not to overlook, and I, I would not be one that would think we need to do a whole lot of explaining to the community at, at this particular moment. I, the, the community seems aware of these initiatives and, and pretty well informed. Um, and we do need affordable housing in our city. We do need more housing that um, you know, employees uh, in any number of uh, positions who are essential to the fabric of the community that we have, that, to, to be able to, to live here as well as work here and shop here and recreate here and all the rest. And it, it's not perfect, I totally agree that it's difficult to have another level of government mandate uh, decisions that I think we would make in good faith uh, equally or even better. But I also understand, and you know, SB nine was mentioned, has SB nine, my sense is it hasn't resulted in a glut of subdivisions and, you know, sort of horribles in our community. But where, from where you sit, do you see that?
That's correct, council member. Um, we've had a handful of SB nine applications, partly because the ADU rules um, be, I've actually superseded a lot of the need for SB nine. So people are able to do ADUs, so it seems to have deferred. But we only have maybe four or five SB nine applications in the city.
Yeah, so that didn't turn out to be, you know, the sky was falling on that as well and it didn't turn out that way. And we continue to have a strong need for uh, housing and particularly affordable housing. And my understanding is that um, there is cleanup legislation in the works. Uh, you know, the seven, ten stump was mentioned, but my understanding is that the legislation presently only applies to already established transit uh, uh, centers. So like the Lake Avenue Station clearly is already established and presumably SB seventy-nine does apply to that. Is that your take as well?
Yes, that's our take, council member.
Yeah, but, but not for as of yet uh, unestablished transit centers is my reading of it. Do you agree with that?
Yes, that's what we've been told.
So um, with regard to Lake Avenue, does the lake, I think you call it the Lake Station District or portion of the specific plan? Uh, do you have that in mind?
Yeah, maybe we can pull up the subareas?
Certainly.
Okay. The Lake Station District?
Yes. And um, one question I had is, is that coextensive with SB seventy-nine's half mile radius? In other words, where it stops, I think on Orange Grove, is that a half mile from Lake Avenue Station?
Yeah, yes, roughly, mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's helpful. I think, you know, the biggest parcel is the one that the city owns and I really appreciated how how you called out in the specific plan that that is an opportunity for housing. And I know that, you know, we own that free and clear, so, you know, in terms of SB 79, we can be the applicant or the counterparty to a development agreement that, you know, would or would not encompass the full range of SB 79, sort of articulation, zoning, density, and all the rest. I'm not aware of a similar-sized parcel even in that half-mile, but of course, one never knows, I suppose, right? In other words, there could be existing uses that would be cashed out and demolished and so as to take advantage of SB 79?
Yeah, someone could accumulate parcels and propose a development, but this is the largest.
Okay, great. All right, well, those are my questions, and I really appreciate it again for all your hard work as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before I turn to Mr. Cole, let me just ask some clarifying questions. So on Mr. Madison's point on SB 79 as it pertains to light rail, clearly the impacts are there for this specific plan as far above Orange Grove. But the point he raises regarding the ditch, there's a transit station existing within a mile and a half already, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the Memorial and the Holly both impact the 710 area.
And so, you know, anyone who believes SB 79 is not going to have an impact on what happens in and around the ditch. Now, the ditch itself, I agree, we control, you know, at the moment. But the property all around those transit stations, including the ditch and surrounding areas, are going to be impacted, particularly if there's lot consolidation. So I don't put much stock in the argument that it's not going to have, that it's not going to be impacted. In terms of, and we're already seeing lots of applications, by the way, for large development. So in terms of the specific plan here, let's take properties like Autozone. What's the density and height limits that we'll be able to have for the, for properties between Orange Grove and Villa?
If we could pull up the density map again?
Because Autozone goes clear back to Mentor.
So that's the dark blue area north of Villa, about where Santa Barbara tees into Lake from the west side. Autozone is on the east side.
Correct. That's a large lot.
Except that the rear of the lot does not go through, I mean, the zoning does not go through to Mentor.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So it stops at the break in the lot that goes clear to Mentor?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And how about properties like Kathleen's, which is on the corner of, oh my gosh, I live in this, not too far from this neighborhood.
Because it's south of Earlham, I believe?
Earlham, yes.
So it's across the street, yeah, actually, it's almost, it's just north of Santa Barbara on the west side, between Santa Barbara and Earlham. So similarly, it's 87 units per acre to the rear of that property.
So how many under, and I disagree with Mr. Madison, SB 79 was not contemplated as we were having these discussions with the community and the plan was being developed. But now that we know SB 79 is well on its way, how does that change what the community planned for properties like the Kathleen's property, that are also a large lot with the parking lot?
I don't think it would change it because this represents the vision. This represents what we did community outreach for.
No, I mean practically.
What would be allowed under SB 79, so that's within the quarter mile, right? So I believe that's, so it'd be 100 units per acre. So instead of 87, it's 100.
Okay.
And the additional height.
And the additional height as well. And how about parking?
I don't think there's much of an impact to parking because there's already parking reductions in state law within close proximity to transit, so there's, the parking wouldn't be an issue. But it's the height and the FAR and the density.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, for the areas along Lake Avenue, south of Orange Grove, those properties SB 79 was contemplated in the plan are, you know, within, you know, there's a lot of overlap between what's in SB 79 and what's in the plan.
Okay.
Because what's in the plan is 87 units per acre. SB 79 is between 80 to 100 units per acre. SB 79 talks about five and six stories as far as a baseline, 55 feet or 65 feet, and the plan is 51 to 63 feet in height. So there's a lot of overlap in that.
Okay.
It's when you go beyond those properties along Lake Avenue that SB 79 could potentially have an impact because those are the properties that are really outside of the commercial core. The areas, the properties along the side streets, those properties, when you look at the radius, that would potentially have, where there's the biggest gap as far as like what's allowed currently under the city's zoning or specific plan and what SB 79 allows. But along Lake Avenue, that's, you know, within the same language.
Now, I'm really alarmed because what you're telling me is it wouldn't even be along the transit, the main corridor. It would bleed further into...
Well, I mean, if you look at the, because it's a radius, right? And Lake Avenue is a corridor, and SB 79 is measured at by radius.
You're right. And so it's even worse than I'm describing. And so, you know, the Mentor area, the, all of those streets are going to be highly, highly impacted. And I don't mean to call them out, but anyone who doesn't, and I mean to suggest, Mr. McDonald, but anyone who doesn't believe that developers are focused on development along Lake Avenue, I'd like you to meet Mr. McDonald, Pasadena's high-density development, well, bellwether. So, you know, you know, so, you know, anyone who believes SB 79 and all of the impacts aren't going to be there, let's hear from Mr. McDonald and see what he thinks when he comes up.
But, yeah.
And I mean that in good sport, Mr. McDonald. Yeah, otherwise, I'm, yeah. So, okay, well, this is, it's more sobering than...
But again, at the discussions, if we're talking about North Lake specific plan, if you look within the boundaries, that it goes just above Orange Grove Boulevard, the areas that's the, you know, the blue color, that's within the range of SB 79. The purple, there's more of a gap, but that's a small portion of it.
Got it. I think we need to have a very, very clear discussion for this specific plan and the other specific plans, the impacts on SB 79 and what we need to do as a city in the approach. And so I'll commit to agendizing that discussion. Thank you. I think for me that, Mr. Cole?
We do have the answer to Councilmember Cole's question on the sites inventory.
Oh, good. I just had one question that I overlooked, I apologize, about trees. In our discussion with the Planning Commission, there was extensive discussion about the appropriate trees. And then the question was, well, it had to be, we couldn't adopt those trees until the Street Tree Master Plan was updated. And then we heard from when the Street Tree Master Plan was updated that they have to think about the trees that are in the... So I think it's kind of wasted effort, right, to do planning in the Public Works Department about what kind of trees we want to have, and planning in the Planning Department about what kind of trees we want to have. What can you tell me about reconciling those two processes?
I'm not an expert on the master street tree plan because it's through Public Works.
I can speak to that, Director Page. So it's my understanding that there's going to be an amendment to the master street tree plan that would address three key things. One would be to allow greater flexibility of trees, so this idea of the right tree in the right place. Another is to increase biodiversity, and it prohibits specific trees like eucalyptics in, within high fire zones. It's expected to come to the City Council in early 2026. And there also, it would say that any street tree that's identified in the specific plan, in the tree design guideline that's attached in all the specific plans that we're bringing forward to council, that those would also be alternative trees that someone can plant.
And I think, Sanita, I think, if I understand Councilmember Cole's question, it's why can't this, if we're going through the effort of the specific plan and we're identifying the trees that the community has said that they would like to have, why do we have to wait for the master street tree plan to be amended in order to incorporate these policies? Is, I think, where you were going?
Yeah, again, we heard at Municipal Services Committee, the report we just heard, and I appreciate it for everyone's benefit to understand, that is coming to us. But we've had three years to ask the Public Works Department, are these trees okay? Are they going to bust up the sidewalk? Or are they going to interfere with traffic? Or, you know, those are reasonable concerns. But we hired one group of consultants to tell us what would be good trees on North Lake. And then we have a whole other process. I would like those processes to not continue to be on separate tracks. And if these trees that we're adopting tonight will be incorporated into the recommendation to us, coming to us, I'm great with that. And I would hope that we'd already done that. And so I'm hopeful that the trees we adopt tonight will be the trees that are in the plan. I don't have any dog in this fight. I'm not, I don't prefer one set of trees over another set of trees. I recognize all the needs, but what frustrates me is when we don't have coordination.
Fair enough. And I see staff.
If we don't, I don't...
It's our understanding that that's going to be the case. But you have to, by process, you have to amend the master street tree plan to incorporate these. We can't supersede that through the specific plans.
That is a good outcome from my standpoint.
And, you know, the issue of street trees and along North Lake have been, has been discussed in prior iterations. So I agree with you that the point of coordination is important. It sounds like the staff is factoring that in. One final point before I turn to public comment. On the issue of equity, you know, the distinction that Mr. Jones raises between South Lake and North Lake, it's a very real issue. You know, traffic was discouraged early on on South Lake Avenue with the center aisles and, you know, all of the plantings and kept up. You know, compare that to North Lake Avenue where the same level of investment was not made. And this is, you know, generations ago. So that's the first issue. But the second issue is the point Jennifer raises, that, you know, it's the traffic, the transportation corridor that is Lake Avenue didn't just accommodate traffic within the city. It accommodated and was constructed to accommodate traffic from outside of the city, from Altadena. Recall that, you know, there's an entire community that, you know, 30,000 or so that found its way to and from Altadena in large part through three corridors, Lake, Fair Oaks, and Lincoln. And the Lake Avenue corridor was constructed to accommodate at one point up to 50,000 car trips a day in that neighborhood. And so, you know, there's also a practical consideration, but, you know, our job is to work with the community to strike that balance, and I think that's what this plan is seeking to do.
And if I could, sorry, we could answer Councilmember Cole's question on the sites inventory?
Oh, yes.
We looked it up. Thank you for giving us the time. It is identified at 32 units per acre, and we're proposing 64. So we're okay there.
Okay. All right, let's hear from the public.
How many minutes? Two minutes. Okay, I will ring a bell at 30 seconds. Steve Preston, followed by Justin Glover, then Dr. Juliana Delgado, then Annette Yason, and then Michael Caravan, and I'll call some more after that. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Preston, representing Pasadena Heritage tonight. For the past six years, Pasadena Heritage has been both a regular observer and a committed participant in the process of developing the specific plan that's before you tonight. It is rare, in our opinion, to see a complex planning process that so masterfully weaves so many threads together, but this plan does that. From our perspective as a historic preservation organization, we appreciate that it uses history and context as a foundation for planning, that it seeks to protect historic properties and building fabric, but it also reaches in a grand way to establish a new Lake Avenue that's a vibrant, commercial street with greater housing opportunity, more quality pedestrian and bicycle environments, and an environmentally sustainable, user-friendly design. We thank the Planning Commission for its foresight and for the effort it's taken, and we appreciate the work by the consultants to produce this plan. At least two councilmembers have already mentioned that, like any great plan, its success will depend on the quality of the implementation that follows it. And to that end, we encourage the council to dedicate and empower leadership that can see the plan to fruition, that there be an ongoing commitment of resources to ensure the same sort of success here that we saw with Old Pasadena, and that there be increased collaboration among both our city family and our external partners, including the good folks up in Altadena who also will have a relationship to what happens with this plan. It's our hope that this work will include the preservation of historic and cultural resources. Engagement is going to be important at each step, but with those understandings, Pasadena Heritage offers its unqualified support and assistance and recommends that the council approve the plan and environmental documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you. Justin Glover, followed by Dr. Juliana Delgado, then Annette Yason, then Michael Caravan, then Carl H.
If you hear your name, please form a line in the center aisle.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Justin Glover, my wife and I live in Bungalow Heaven. We've lived there about six, seven years, and we immediately saw the need for some positive change on Lake Avenue. Some of my neighbors have been waiting a lot longer than us for this change, so thank you for that. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the Planning Commission for listening to the community and incorporating the concerns and respecting the historic character of the community. Nobody does historic preservation like Pasadena, so thank you for doing that. And we too would like to see implementation be focused on. We agree with that as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Juliana Delgado, then Annette Yason, then Michael Caravan, Carl H., and Martha Schenkenberg.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council and city staff. As Chair of the Planning Commission Subcommittee on the Public Realm section of the North Lake specific plan, I'm here simply to urge you to adopt the recommended draft and move swiftly to its implementation, especially development of a streetscape. Our vision and aim is to transform North Lake Avenue, as you've heard, into a great street, a vibrant, multimodal, complete, green, economic generator that serves as the heart of the surrounding neighborhoods, provides opportunities for more housing, and is a place we all want to be. Please also recognize the many members of the community representing six historic districts, along with our talented city planners, especially David Sinclair and Anita Serna, that collaborated in crafting this landmark document, which is a testament to place making. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Yason, followed by Michael Caravan, then Carl H., then Martha Schenkenberg.
Annette, welcome.
Hi, I'm Annette Yason, and I am speaking as President of Bungalow Heaven Neighborhood Association. And I, this is going to be very brief. It is just a thank you to all of you who participated in making this fantastic document, and I know that it has gone through many years. I haven't been here that long since it has, and now coming to fruition. And I would also like to thank my board members and all the residents of Bungalow Heaven who are here today to support and to give their suggestions on this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Caravan? Michael Caravan, are you not here? Carl H., no? Martha, go ahead.
Schickenberg, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much. That document's very impressive. I would just like to urge the council to assign somebody at a very high level to shepherd this process. It's going to be very complex with many departments and very many stakeholders. So in order that it doesn't sit on the shelf, I think we should really provide some strong resources and strong leadership behind this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a good point. You know, the, the plan really should be invested in. And I've heard Mr. Cole and Mr. Jones, all of us, Mr. Hampton, mentioned that. And so I think that having some check-ins on implementation is important. And look, ultimately, it's going to be private investors who implement. And, you know, we, we need to see how it is that they're doing that at different milestones.
Asher Volmer, followed by Joe Feinblatt, followed by Richard McDonald, then Sarah Lawrence.
Hi there. My name's Asher Volmer. I'm a resident in Pasadena. I live smack in the middle of the plan, and I'm here just to give my overwhelming support for the plan. I've been to all the meetings that I can since I've lived here for the past four years. And there's, there's just overwhelming consensus at these meetings that we want it to be pedestrian-friendly. We want it to be a place, it's like, we're surrounded by all these beautiful neighborhoods, and it's this gash down the middle that we want to fix and make it to a destination and not just a traffic artery. And so I think a big part of this moving forward will be the streetscape, how public transit works. We have that train station right there. We should get people to and from that train station via buses, via bikes, via walking, and we should make that a top priority. And I'm very in favor of the, the density, and I'm, and yeah, and I would definitely want a big focus on the trees. I know it was brought up, but specifically evergreen. It's hot all the time in Pasadena. They should not lose their leaves. They should be evergreen trees. And yeah, and I just want to thank the committee for doing such a good job. This is such a well-thought-through plan, and it's an absolutely no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Feinblatt, followed by Richard McDonald, then Sarah Lawrence, then Greg Stanilowski, then Amy DeVal, and then Michael Caravan is on the line, I see.
I come here as one of the people who've been involved for the past quarter century on this plan, and all the great visions we had initially partially got done, but not very far. And so the need for resources to implement the plan and to watch and see the way things happen, and even make adjustments as necessary based on experience, is extremely important. I did notice one thing that was presented today that I don't remember seeing before, and that is I live on Hudson, south of Clermont, and I noticed that it looked like the changing, the zoning and density on Hudson and Clermont in an area that was supposed to, I think, remain in the single-family residence plans that I've seen up to this point. So I want to make sure that that's clear, that that whole block isn't going to be the highest density. And I look forward to hoping to see these things done within, at least partially, my lifetime. I know a lot of people who were involved early on are no longer here. Some of the most active people missed seeing this vision happen, and I hope the current generation will see these things happen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Richard McDonald, followed by Sarah Lawrence, then Greg Stanilowski, then Amy DeVal, then Michael Caravan.
Mr. McDonald, you heard how shocked I am to see you here, but let's.
No, I appreciate all the compliments.
I said to the city clerk, I wouldn't be surprised if Mr. McDonald uses that in his outreach.
Well, you know, sometimes, sometimes, you know, you're on television. I don't need to do much once you.
Go ahead, sir.
In any event, I'm here on behalf of the owners of the southwest corner of Lake in Washington, whom I represent. We, as a general matter, think this is a very good plan. We commend staff with their efforts and their outreach. We have a little bit of concern with regard to not making the specific plan density consistent with the general plan. As a general matter unrelated to the specifics of our property, that does create an anomaly that can create issues with the state density bonus laws you saw in the central district several years ago. So that's something, I think, to monitor and keep an eye on, where in the central district, you had a number of people using the state density bonus law in a way that went beyond your expectations. We do look forward to trying to figure out how to implement the plan to the benefit of the property owners and the city. Unfortunately, right now, we are constrained and unable to do so because of the development and disposition agreement that's on the property from almost now more than 40 years ago. So we look forward to working with the city and figuring out how to terminate that so that we can work with the city to fully develop the site and implement your vision for it.
This is the Food for Less property?
Yes.
Which is the subject of an ownership agreement that involves 40 people with a loan that never comes due. And so if your client is agreeable to paying the loan, I think it's a conversation, hopefully, that his partners will agree with, and we ought to absolutely consider.
The amount of the loan is beyond the realm of reality at this point.
That's precisely, it's one of the worst deals ever cut in Pasadena in the 1980s.
Yeah, I think it was the late 70s.
70s, yeah.
Yeah, late 70s.
Yeah.
You know, before you and I were born.
You're having too much fun. You're having too much fun, Mr. McDonald.
Sarah Lawrence, followed by Greg Stanilowski, and then Amy DeVal and Michael Caravan on virtual. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, thanks for having me. I'm very happy to support this plan. I thought equally, as with everybody else here, that it was very thoughtful and well-crafted. I look forward to living in the North Lake Village section of Lake Boulevard when it's finally put in. We clearly need to build more housing, and if the city doesn't plan for it, the state will eventually mandate it through current or future Senate bills, those that are known, such as SB 79, and those future bills aiming to make it easier to build more multifamily housing. I live directly behind the CVS on Mentor, which is a kind of a complicated site, but I look forward to the day when we have a mixed-use, mixed-income development directly in front of my house. Hopefully, this plan will motivate a better and more equitable development of that site. I would also just like to finally suggest that the bridge over the 134-210 freeway, and I know it would be difficult, but somehow be incorporated into the plan. It sort of seems to be the missing gap between north and south. And that experience crossing that freeway is pretty horrific, and that's also the entrance to the metro stop, which is, really needs a significant improvement to make it feel safer and to make it more welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Stanilowski, are you here? There you are.
Good evening. Thank you for the time, Council. I'm, my family and I have owned three parcels on the southeast corner of Lake in Washington for over 50 years. In the two parcels, there's four units, retail units, right on Washington, on Lake, just south of Washington. But an important point is, one of those parcels is a parking lot. It's over on the Mentor side. And so you might be aware, but the city of Pasadena owns the north lot. Our family owns the south lot. And so I wanted to bring this to the attention, and I've been trading phone calls with Mr. Sinclair. I want to get a little bit more definition of what this proposal is. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is we've got this agreement that we had, the reciprocal agreement that has lapsed. And so I know we're working with David Klug on that, and, but we want to make sure that our ownership rights of this, this lot, I think everybody thinks it's a public lot. It is privately owned, right next to the publicly-owned city lot. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that and see what the zoning effects would be on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public members on line. Amy DeVal, followed by Michael Canavan. Mr. DeVal.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my question is with regard to page 63 of the North Lake specific plan. There is a map that shows the zoning districts, and the southeast corner of Washington and Lake is shown as NL-MU-C, which relates to something core. But I think that per attachment, oh gosh, I'm trying to get to, per attachment B of the North Lake specific plan, it mentions keeping that area to low mixed use. And on the zoning code amendment, it refers to changing RM12 zoning district to the NLMUN, which stands for neighborhood. So I just want to know if that's something that needs to be adjusted on, like, the map and then figure three shown on the zoning code amendment on page six, if that will change to NLMUN for neighborhood?
Thank you.
Attachment F that I'm referring to, page seven, zoning districts, if it will be updated to N for Nancy, L M for Mary, U and then N for Nancy, to match what is south of Clermont on Lake?
Thank you. Michael Canavan?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, two minutes. Ring a bell at 30 seconds.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Canavan. I want to speak broadly in support of the North Lake specific plan. I know it's been a long road and a tremendous amount of work to create this, and it really shows in the thoughtfulness of the plan. I know right now, North Lake Avenue can be a dangerous and difficult place to be a pedestrian, and for that reason, the residents are really going to appreciate all the streetscape and pedestrian improvements. It's also the reason I empathize that SB 79 is set to supersede a substantial portion of the plan area, but I do want to speak in defense of the law. We do have a housing crisis in Pasadena that we need to move swiftly to address, with many in our city suffering from burdensome rents, either long displaced or living on the street. And while city planning processes work well, slowly and thoughtfully, this crisis is here now, and it's worsening day by day. We are not close to meeting either our market rate or affordable housing goals, and laws like SB 79 can help us do that by focusing dense, sustainable, affordable housing exactly where it should be, close to transit. We're lucky to have the A-line in Pasadena. Billions of dollars have been invested in it, but it needs a critical mass of riders to thrive, and that's a big benefit of SB 79, which takes the prospect of transit-oriented development seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That completes public comment on this item.
Okay, so lots of work. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you to staff for your work. And, oh, Mr. Cole is in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll endeavor to be brief. I want to reiterate that it's an extraordinary moment, that these many years of effort have culminated in such broad consensus. It's really quite remarkable. We sometimes will fight for three hours over a single parcel or a single project, and here we have a huge section of our city where a consensus has been built around fairly significant potential future changes. So it's a tribute to our staff. It's a tribute to the community that has participated, and I think it's an extraordinary moment, and I'm deeply appreciative of all of the efforts by our community and by our I have, I have two concerns. One is relatively minor. The difference between alternatives three and four on fast food. Could we have that slide?
The fast food node, as we called it, used to call it, maybe still do.
My neighborhood, I'd like to call it.
Yeah, me too.
In 2000, in 1997, we promised to phase out the fast foods, and as you pointed out, it was changed in 2007, and the result was six of the fast food emporiums are refurbished and will be there presumably for a long time. So that's why the difference between three and four is relatively minor, but I will advocate for number four. Number three, which says, you know, let's see, number three, which says that minor exterior changes or maintenance improvements, new branding, paint color signage and landscaping, I'm sorry, I'm for three, not four. I apologize. The concern that somehow not remodeling these fast foods is going to lead to them being, coming, you know, decrepit or, you know, et cetera, I just think is overblown. Just that if they can, if they can repaint the thing, if they can change the colors, they can change the signage, they can change the landscaping, that's what causes places to decline. And if they should, they have the authority under number three to continue to do that. The, the theory of the advantages of number four is that if we let them remodel, then, and potentially add or change their queuing lanes, that that's a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing to, to continue fast foods, and here are the reasons why. Mr. Hampton pointed some out that really go to the whole question of whether we're trying to, to create in this part of our city, the sense of community that, that it's truly neighborhood-serving and not people coming from all over the city to clog the traffic in that neighborhood. We don't allow fast foods on South Lake, but we allow them on North Lake. And we allow them because there's a lot of cars going by. The problem with letting a lot of cars go by and putting fast foods on there is a traffic nightmare all the time. You've got cars coming in, coming out, coming in, coming out, and 50,000 cars trying to go north and south at the same time. So it's a traffic problem. It's a litter problem. It's a community problem. It's a problem that makes it very difficult for pedestrians with cars constantly coming and going. And in the era of climate change, having cars idling, sitting there waiting to order a cup of coffee is not ideal. So the difference between three and four is probably, you know, a question of whether one or two of these might, might change to a different use 10, 15, 20 years from now. But I think what we know is that 10, 15, 20 years from now comes relatively soon, right? We've seen that with our UCLA contract. We've seen that with a whole number of things, that we think that things that are a long way away turn out to be not so far away. So I'm going to advocate for, for number three. The, the other issue that, that has been raised, and Mr. Hampton said it eloquently, Mr. Jones, you've added your voice, Mr. Mayor, we did a specific plan for Old Pasadena. And it's not just a question of equity. It's a question of economic survival. It's a question of economic survival. We made a big bet in this city fifty years ago on corporate offices and a downtown mall. And and subsequently, that spawned a lot of additional private development of offices and retail across our city. The trouble is, is that it's twenty twenty-five and the and the land uses that have reached a point of diminishing returns are corporate offices and retail. So at a time when people are working at home and ordering online, we have a huge amount of our of our land use that is either gone vacant, struggling or within the penumbras of of threat down the road. And so placemaking is going to be really essential. And in Old Pasadena, when we adopted the specific plan, we didn't say, okay, private developers, y'all come. We had Marcia Rood work all day, every day to coordinate every single department in this city, police department, public works, fire department, to revitalize Old Pasadena, and we spent ten years. Now, the argument will be, oh, yes, but that was in the era of redevelopment. We had lots of money. Well, we didn't have any redevelopment in South Lake. But we also invested an enormous amount of money into making South Lake. And as the mayor said, that was decades ago. But the result is, South Lake is a has been a gold mine for this city on retail and as a as a asset to the neighborhood. As a result, Old Pasadena has been a gold mine for this city and has been an asset to the surrounding neighborhoods. That's what we're asking for for North Fair Oaks, North Lincoln or Lincoln and North Lake is is to put the resources there. We can't at this stage afford the same scale of investment that was made in South Lake and North Lake. But we can certainly invest a significant amount of staff time into identifying the resources and reallocating resources and even doing the very modest things of placemaking that don't cost a huge amount of money. The little local small businesses there, the neighbors that want to walk and shop there deserve it. And so I I want to do more than report in a year on how well we're doing. I would like us to have an understanding that the city manager and the planning department will will take a look at the implementation and and identify in the capital and operating budget projects for North Lake that that can spur initial investment. I feel the same way about North Fair Oaks. I feel the same way about Lincoln Avenue, but Lake Avenue is before us today. And so I would like us to commit staff time to not just come back in a year and see how it went, but rather proactively to commit staff time to seeing what kind of resources can be identified. And particularly because the comment was made about the businesses, yes, absolutely. The businesses and property owners ought to be, but we have to go out and talk to them. They are not going to come here tonight. We had one property owner. And that's what we did in Old Pasadena. We went to them. That's why we have a bid on South Lake, that's why we have a bid in Old Pasadena, that's why we have a bid in the Playhouse District, is we spurred those bids. And so that's one of the things I would most like to see is for us to devote the resources. We spend money like water on outreach and other consultants. And I would love us to spend a modest amount of of money to actually outreach the business and property owners to explore a bid, which will pay dividends forever. If if the merchants and property owners there are willing to invest and believe the city is going to also invest, that's the kind of of partnership that resulted in the South Lake Parking District, that resulted in the Old Pasadena revitalization, and that has been very successful on both South Lake and Old Pasadena. Let's learn from our previous successes. I'm I'm, this is a cry from the heart because I was part of the nineteen ninety-seven specific plan. And we planted some trees, which are now mature. It's nice. We did some medians, and then we stopped. And we need to make good on this plan. We've heard tremendous support from the neighborhoods to the east and to the west, tremendous support. Let's let's bring it to bear, not just because north of the freeway neighborhoods deserve it, but because it's a huge potential investment with a giant payoff for a city that's that's really having financial struggles as we look ahead. We've done a great job of managing our our finances up to this point. But the storm clouds are on the horizon through no fault of our own. And we'll need to have new private investment. And the way to spur new private investment is through modest but sustained public investment.
Agreed, Mr. Cole. The the, let me just address the bid issue, you know, the the bid has been attempted to be organized time and again. I myself walked walked the avenue a number of times with some of the people who are here, trying to get businesses interested and property owners interested in a bid. And we tried a number of times. And but one of the things that we learned is many of the parcels were owned by, you know, property owners who don't operate a business there. And they instead lease to small business owners who, you know, are busy trying to, you know, keep their eye on the cash register and keep people keep turning a profit. And so it's not that it hasn't been attempted. And I and I'm in no way dismissing that we should attempt it again, and now is the time. But it's, there's a complexity there as well. Again, let's let's try it. Let's do it. I'll walk with you out there. In terms of South Lake, there there really is a, you know, I I don't disagree with the level of investment, all of that. But there really is a difference. And and I I see it myself, and I've seen it as I talk to people, you know. We're of two minds on the issue of traffic on Lake Avenue. And one in one regard, you know, we'd love to, many of us would love to slow it down and create a more walkable avenue until traffic backs up. And then people, you know, start, then we start getting the phone calls about, hey, traffic along Lake Avenue was backed up and it's spilling into the neighborhoods, including Bungalow Heaven. And so we have to be conscious of that. And in terms of the investment, I I don't disagree with you that, you know, the city in the past has invested wisely. But it was in large part because we had the investment dollars, the redevelopment dollars to make. And so in, you know, as we were investing in other parts of the city, we didn't have reinvestment. I'm sorry. Redevelopment, thank you. You know, we sort of took other dollars and invested there because we had available to us redevelopment dollars to invest in redevelopment areas. That's gone, but we should add it to the city's agenda. We've got to push the state to to bring back some level of redevelopment and ask our our state representatives to to do that. With that, you know, again, thank you to all my colleagues, to the staff, to the community. And and, you know, if if we do have active management on the part of the staff and the community, importantly, and the business and property owners, I think we can make a difference. The trees, by the way, and the tree wells were installed in about two thousand and two because I was here when we approved them and I pushed for those tree wells to be installed. And now we do have mature trees to add to the trees that you described as well. So it's been a work in time. And and the only thing I would say is, we actually, do we have any property owners? We have one property owner here and then the representative of a partnership with forty property owners. And so, you know, we we call on our property owners to to work with us, to make that bid a reality. So to work with us, all of us, the community, the council, the staff. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Hampton?
I appreciate the discussion. I and I, as mentioned earlier, you know, about the investment piece of it. And I understand that we don't have redevelopment dollars, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor. But there are other things that we can do, right? I mean, in my district, just recently, last Wednesday, we have a nuisance property, which is a liquor store. It's called Liquor Box. Tons of issues with it, right? Property owner bought it. He went through the process. Our planning department did an amazing job to help him through the process over, you know, the years that he was working through the process. At the finish line, we hit him with a three hundred and three hundred plus thousand dollar permit fee. And he says, wow, I've never ever paid for anything like this for a sized project like this. There are things we can do, right? That are within our control, that we don't have to ask the state for anything that we could have given that, you know, you're getting rid of a nuisance. We shouldn't have charged for fees as far as I'm concerned. I mean, but it is what it is. But there are things that we can do to entice property owners for development. If you have to develop and I and I'm tell you that, you know, my project's going to cost me a hundred thousand dollars, but your permit fees are going to cost you thirty or forty thousand, and you're a small business owner, then we're going to put some pain on the building because that's just too expensive if you're a small business owner. There are ways that we can entice and encourage development in a in a meaningful way, even even keep the character of the neighborhood. So I would love that discussion. I would like that to be, I don't know, Mr. Cole's, I mean, Councilmember Cole's making the motions since this is, the majority of it is in your district. So if you'd like to make the motion, I'm supportive of. Was that a motion that you that you made?
But I'm about to make a motion with some with some language.
Okay, and with that.
Majority of it is in the Strydus's district.
That's right. I'm saying, well, a portion of it is in my district, but it's a small portion.
All the way to the to the city boundary.
And it's all your district, so. So I wanted to give difference to Councilmember Cole. But I do think that there are ways that we could entice development, engage property owners. And I would love that discussion to come as a part of this motion. I would like that discussion to come. It could come to EdTech or come back from the full city council within ninety days. Because what is it, sixty days after we pass it? How long does it take? Is it longer than sixty days?
These take a lot longer because there's a lot of land use tables. There's a lot of work to do when we update the specific plans. So I think we have.
So I guess then within a hundred and twenty days.
Four months for this one? Yeah, but it'll be before then, but that's the outset.
Okay, so I guess the discussion could come to EdTech around the same time that it comes back to the full city council.
Let's let's let the staff give some thought to the timing and and, you know, the substance of the discussion. Your point is a very good one, and it echoes in many ways what members of the public have said.
And with all due respect to the staff, and I know the staff's time is, you know, invaluable, and you guys do a lot of work. But these are issues that we're talking about are going to change within the next ten years. And I think that we have to have a sense of urgency behind that. I've I've heard from multiple times where, you know, we two years down the line something was supposed to come and a couple of council members send an email, and next thing you know, it never comes. So I think with the motion, having dates, I'm just saying in general, having a motion with the dates certain or that our our residents would have an understanding with that.
Absolutely.
I think timelines are everything. That's all that's all I have to say. Timeline is good.
Let's let's, as Chair of EdTech, you can work with the staff to find the appropriate time. I just don't want to set an artificial timeline that doesn't notice the result we want. Because it's going to take, you know, we we can sit around here and, you know, sometimes work queues of sitting around here and creating the best plans, you know. But then when we go to implement, you know, we learn that no plan needs first contact with reality, I think is the quote, because it's more difficult to implement than it is to think it through. And so we're going to need the help of the business community. Because if we come up with a plan and then go to them and say, you know, here it is. Now change your property, invest in your property, it's going to get us nowhere. And so I'd like the staff to give some thought to how we bring in property owners as part of the discussion. Because ultimately, it's going to be that private investment that makes the real difference. And so, you know, I'll ask that you and I and the staff work together to to bring it to EdTech. And again, you know, it's going to, a plan is only as good as the implementation. And it's going to require property owners. Okay. With that, I think, Mr. Cole?
So I will move the staff recommendation for adoption of the plan with the SEQA findings, et cetera, with the addition that A, prior to the adoption of the implementation ordinance, we instruct the staff to assign appropriate staff to report to EdTech on opportunities for early capital, operating and grant funding to jumpstart investment in placemaking and programmatic initiatives under the implementation section of this plan. I'll second that. Well, we'll let, yeah. And then B, that we that we adopt option three on fast foods.
Yeah, I'm I'm I I, yeah, on on the issue of item three, I just, option three, I I think, if you can put them back, put it back up. Can we bifurcate the vote?
Yeah, could we take the first motion?
Yeah, I know, I just, it's questioned more than anything else.
Yeah, no, it's not a do or die, one way or the other. And I I think it's hard to make an argument that that three is that much better or worse, depending on your perspective, than four. I just think that it's cleaner to to call out that that in fact they are nonconforming uses and 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 ultimately should be abated. In the meantime. Second your your motion, but I'd like to hear from our colleagues.
Yeah, I I, I mean, I'm right in the middle on this one because I've seen when we when we added the fast food to legal, nonconforming uses. And, you know, suddenly we we did get dilapidated properties that were not invested in and and had to unwind some of that and allow for, you know, some investment. Now that we're adding housing, you know, the concern would be, okay, well, you know, can they now build a housing and incorporate their fast food into a new development? And so that would be a concern. So I can argue both sides, as I'm sure you can, Mr. Cole.
Why don't why don't we take that separately? I certainly am conscious that, so let's have a motion on everything but B. And let's have a, you know, at least a, again.
Yeah.
I I, we've had, been all, all of the six fast foods have been have been refurbished. We don't have any dilapidated properties. The question is, what's the most likely to lead to them being replaced over time? And I think number three is the most likely to have them be replaced over time. And again, they can continue to repaint, they can relanscape, they just can't remodel. That's the difference. And I think that doesn't.
I'm there. I just, I'm just highlighting why I'm of two minds on the issue.
I understand. And again, I I think it's, I respect that there are more than one view. I respect the Planning Commission's recommendation. That's my preference. So why don't we take a vote on B? And then we can come to the main motion.
Before we do that, the Planning Commission's recommendation was item three?
Number four.
Number four?
Staff and the Planning Commission is number four.
Yeah, thank you.
So I will move that we incorporate alternative three. I I recommend item three as preferable to item four. And we'll, and it's been seconded. So let's take the roll call on that and then. Um, and we'll, we'll, and it's been seconded, um, so let's take the roll call on that, and then we can go to the main motion.
Fair enough.
So that's before, with respect to the rest of the.
We're, we're doing the.
Staff recommendations regarding.
Well, we can do the, we can do.
Let's do the main motion.
Mr. Madison has a hand up.
Well, ho- hold on one second, Mr. Madison. Uh, let's see what, so I, I understood you to say, let's move the plan with the exception of that question on three or four.
I was suggesting that we start with the first question about whether we go with three or four, and then whichever way we go on three or four, we incorporate into the main motion. That, but if there's a better procedural approach, I'm open to that. I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to respect that. Give everybody a chance not to have to, to vote, even if they're, have a difference of opinion on the main, on the main.
I got it. I was just trying to figure out which one. Mr. Madison?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that, um, first of all, I'm looking at the staff recommendation. I don't see a B. I don't see, um, it's gonna be bifurcated, but I don't see option three. So I wanna make sure for everyone that we're following. Where, what page of the staff recommendation should I be looking at?
Um, Councilmember, in the staff report, it's page sixteen and seventeen. That has the drive-through section, and we have it as numbers one through four. Staff is recommending number four. Um, Councilmember Cole is advocating for option number three.
Okay, let me just get to that. So.
That was the motion.
Yeah, so it's the staff recommendation, but with an exception. And, uh, or is there a choice required, Jennifer, on that?
Three and four are, are different. Um, and three, which is the, I'm, um, yeah, so three and four are different. Um, three being the most restrictive, um, in terms of options. And so a, a drive-through would only be allowed to make basically maintenance.
I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the staff recommendation on the first page of the staff report.
Oh, okay.
And does it require us to make that choice that you're describing?
Well, the staff recommendation is number four, and so Councilmember Cole is proposing that that be different, and it be number three. So he's proposing something different than the staff and planning commission recommendation.
Okay. I mean, my concern is, like, we have locally owned businesses there, right? Teramia is a Pasadena-based business. Uh, you know, I, I don't know about the Starbucks. It may well be, I don't know if it's a corporate store or a locally owned. So are we sure we want to legislate, uh, out of existence those businesses at some point in the future as opposed to have the discretion? Is it binary, Jennifer? Is it? Is it either or?
Um, we're not, um.
Sorry, I'm asking staff, yeah, I'm asking staff a question.
As proposed, yes, it's, it's either or. It's either three or four.
Okay, so three.
Unless there's a proposal, something else, but the way it's set up, it's either three or four.
Well, it's three or four with a minor CUP.
Yeah, and, and so then the, the difference, I'll just take a minute, the, the, number three, if we're on the scale of being restrictive, number three is the most restrictive, but you can still, in fairness to Councilmember Cole, you could, um, change outsideage, you could paint, you could update landscaping, you just could not make any exterior remodeling. You couldn't change the, you could not remodel the building. So if there's a new concept and they have different reforms or window openings and things like that, that could not be done.
No matter, pause. So if we had another fire, a seismic event, or a bad storm, they'd be done?
Well, actually, under the non-conforming provisions, they, they can, um, they could repair the building. Um, I'm looking to set, right, and if it's lost, we, you can rebuild, right, as long as you expand it? Yeah, yeah. So there, there is some provision if there's a, a disaster or a fire, something that they could rebuild.
Okay, well, we're bifurcating that, as I understand. And so was it clear to you, Jennifer, what staff is required to do to quote-unquote implement in the motion? Cause I heard additional language about a timetable for that and how that would happen.
Oh, you mean in general, in terms of implementation of the plan beyond just this issue?
No, I'm talking about, well, yes, in general, but I'm talking about the, the language that the motion added requiring that.
Yes, I understand what Councilmember Cole included.
All right, and then I wonder if there's any appetite. I mean, the one thing, you know, it's funny that we're sitting around talking about maybe this, maybe that, how do we stimulate? We own a large parcel in that district. We own it free and clear. We own it ourselves. There are no partners, no other investors, no strings attached, except for the surplus land act. Um, I, I'd like to see part of this motion be that we move forward to issue a proper RFP and have, uh, the development of housing there. So I don't know if the maker would accept that as a friendly amendment or.
Are you, are you referring to the Kaiser property?
The Kaiser property, yes.
We, we, we did issue an RFP, and we're now, we're in negotiations with the.
Yeah, but that was under different circumstances, as you well know, Mayor. That was now, there's, there's no partnership with the county. That didn't work out. And now, um, I believe for one, that we should issue a proper RFP, unencumbered by that, uh, sort of deal, and, uh, and see what we can do there.
It's not encumbered by anything. We, we, we are in negotiations for what's going to go there with, uh, with the per, with the successful respondent to the RFP.
Yeah, but it was limited, and I, I'm just asking the maker of the motion if that's something he's interested in. If not, we can take that up elsewhere.
Uh, I think, I think it belongs in a different format.
Thank you.
Belongs, what, could you amplify on that?
Point of order, Mayor, these are two different things. We're talking about a specific plan, and we're talking about a RFP.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we're really agendized for that, um, as the city attorney is agreeing.
Well, no, I think the properties within the specific plan, and we're, I'm hearing a lot of talk about how are we gonna make investment actually occur here and spur activity of the kind that we want, either economic development or housing. And we're, meanwhile, we're sitting on a large parcel proximate to the transit station that presents a great opportunity for us.
That we acquired less than, that we acquired less than two years ago.
It was long, much longer than that.
Much longer, okay.
Yeah. So, but anyway, I'll move on.
But part of the RFP, part of the RFP is, for the, part of the RFP was to tell us what partnerships could be formed, uh, and neither the county or anyone else is off the table for a partnership. That's part of what was included in the RFP and what is being negotiated with the successful, um, uh, proposer in the RFP. So there's more to come on that, Mr. Madison.
Yeah, I, I disagree with you respectfully, Mayor, but let's, let's not debate it now. Um.
You brought it up, okay. You brought it up, but okay, um, we can continue.
Okay, what's our procedure for, um, for the sequencing of this vote?
Yeah.
Well, look to the city.
So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Madison.
And, and just to be clear again, um, we're not putting any of these out of business. They, they can operate in perpetuity, um, uh, with their existing business model. And, um, in the future, should they wish to remodel, um, they can be part of, for example, the ground floor of, of a housing development, right? But what goes away is the drive-through. They can have a McDonald's, a Starbucks, a Teramia. They just, um, in the future, if they wanna make major changes, um, we, we end up with something else. Okay.
So for clarification, are you suggesting that there be two different motions? One is just to see if, uh, the council is interested in substituting recommendation three regarding drive-through businesses for recommendation four, and then depending on that result, then the rest of staff's recommendation? Or are you saying you want to go along with staff's recommendation as indicated in the agenda report, one, two, three, four, five, on the recommendation, however substituting, uh, the aspect that deals with, um, drive-through businesses, three for four, all in one vote? So it's two different things I'm trying to ask.
Um, I think it's one motion. However, I am acceding to the request that we, um, take separate votes on different parts of the motion. The motion is to adopt the specific plan with the two additions, A, the implementation language, and B, option four, option three instead of option four. Those are, those, that's my motion. It's been seconded. Uh, but, but if there's a way to resolve, um, item B for those who want to dissent from item B and don't wanna vote against the whole plan because they don't agree with, with B, I wanna give everybody the opportunity to vote on that.
I'm wondering if there's a, a middle ground. So the, the, the CUP process is intended to give us, although I, I don't know what the impact would be now that we have SB seventy-nine in some parts of, of the avenue, but the CUP process um, is intended to give some guardrails, um, to, uh, development. Um, and so with the minor CUP, it's, um, the standard is, well, why don't you explain to us the CUP standard and the minor CUP standard?
The difference between a minor CUP and the CUP is the noticing distance is three hundred feet instead of five hundred feet, and there's not a hearing on a minor CUP unless one is requested. It goes to the hearing officer, and it's placed on an agenda, and we notice it, but, um, it's, there's not a hearing unless one is requested. And the, the intent of that is if, uh, it's just for drive-through businesses. If a drive-through business wanted to remodel and put, do new design changes, um, that would require the minor CUP, and then we could add conditions related to the operation or things if we had any issues at that time, um, that you're not getting if it's just a non-conforming use in there, just making changes under the code.
So if we set, uh, item three as the baseline in the plan and then set it, but if you want to have rights under item four, then it's a full CUP. Does that put us in a stronger position?
Could we put that slide back up? I'm sorry.
Do, do you follow my question?
Um, I'm gonna have you repeat it for me one more time when we have the slide up.
So, so if we, if we.
Sorry.
Yeah. The, so if we set the baseline for non-conforming uses as item, as three, as Mr. Cole is suggesting, and require a minor CUP, but then say, but, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna have a pressure release valve, and if you really make, if, if you want to have rights as represented in item four, then you have to apply not for a minor CUP, but for a full-blown CUP, my term, not necessarily a technical term. Um, and that would, would, so the question is, would that give us more authority and control if, um, the property owner were to say, I, I want rights under item four?
The difference would be if it's a deterrent, I think, for the property owner to say, well, I'm gonna have to pay more money for a full CUP instead of a minor CUP, um, and go to a full, a mandatory hearing instead of, uh, I might only have a hearing. You know, it's a more, a little bit more of an arduous process to go through the CUP. And so would that be something that, if they wanted to do what's in number four, it would require a full CUP? I, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, a, a full CUP, and so it gives the community an opportunity to be heard because the mandate's a hearing. Uh, my question is, does it give us more influence over? Could we give ourselves more influence over what's actually done at the property and how it's redeveloped? Could we encourage, for, could we mandate, for example, okay, we'll give you a CUP uh, if you incorporate housing or, you know, whatever it may be, in, as part of your rebuild and redevelopment of the property?
So this is only related to someone making changes to just a drive-through? If they introduce housing or anything like that, that's not subject to a conditional use permit. So this is really about one of these drive-throughs that decides they wanna remodel, and what, you know, what, to what extent of remodeling do we wanna allow, and what, what process do we want for that?
Got it, okay.
It's only about the drive-throughs.
And so, so I guess my question stands, could, could we give ourselves more? Um, if someone wanted to, because that's, that's precisely what we saw with, uh, Chick-fil-A and also with, um, McDonald's, is we saw, you know, they, they wanted the dual traffic lanes, and so ultimately.
That would not be allowed here unless, under staff's proposal, number four, you could only increase the number of queuing lanes or the number of spaces if you were addressing a, um, a deficiency in circulation that was improving the conditions. So you'd have to have an identified problem, and then adding the second lane would alleviate the issue. That's the only time you'd be able to, but that could also be taken off the table. If you don't want any change in the queuing lanes, that could be removed. I mean, you can make modifications to, to these.
Mayor, are you, are you asking for option three, but then just tag on a full CUP if they wanted to make design alterations to the existing? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but the maker of the motion would have to.
It's not my preference, but look, we've spent a lot of time on this, and again, it's largely academic, right? I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's worth anyone dying on, on this sword. And my preference would be that it's a non-conforming use, and they can keep it up. But if they want to, to significantly remodel their place, they can't because we don't wanna continue to perpetuate drive-throughs on North Lake. That's my preference. Um, I agree, Mr. Mayor, that it, that, um, a major CUP doesn't give us any more legal right, but it does give us a little bit more public notice. Um, so.
And discretion to so, to some degree. And that's, that's really the question.
I don't think it gives us any, I don't think a minor CUP.
No, minor CUP, definitely not, but.
No, no, neither, there's no discretion difference.
That's my question. Does it, can we, can we give ourselves discretion, um, through this amendment by saying, look, you can only avail yourself of four if you work with us to incorporate, you know, housing, whatever it may be. That's really the, the heart of my question.
And again, it only relates to the drive-through businesses. So it doesn't give you the authority to, you still have to have a nexus to whatever conditions you're adding. You can't say, right, okay, we'll allow you to remodel the drive-through, but we want you to add housing. You know, for example, that, that wouldn't be something that would be really under the purview of this, of the CUP. It's related to the function and operation of the drive-through. But the, the regular CUP versus the minor, the findings are the same for both of them. Um, they can both be called for review, but there is more of a noticing requirement, um, for the full CUP, and there's a, a mandatory hearing. It's not optional. So that's, that's a big difference.
Thank you for answering my question. That's, that's what I was driving at. Can we give ourselves more discretion and have more of a say if we afford them, um, the option under item four? Now, we can always amend.
Unfortunately, no, is the answer.
That's, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not prepared to just, uh, accept that whole cloth. I, I think, I think the answer is no now. I'd like the staff to give that some thought because we can always amend the, 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 uh, the plan. So. Um, again.
Could we, let's just take a, a vote on, on item B and see what, what the results are and, and then go from there.
I'm on the, in the queue, uh, Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Madison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just quickly, I wanna, what you were describing was what I was proposing a few minutes ago. And I, I think we need to be clear-eyed that you can't say it's number three, but with a showing, you can do it if you do a bunch of other stuff, because number three says, no remodeling or rebuilding allowed, period. So it sounds like for different reasons, maybe the council is sort of coming together around number three. I intend to vote no on that part because that will kill those businesses. Um, and it may not be today or tomorrow, but it will be in the future, and I would like us to have discretion to not kill them. But number three couldn't be more clear that it's non-conforming use, and the building may be, um, may not be expanded or rebuilt.
Well, let me, let me just say this, Mr. Madison. This is sort of like Back to the Future, you know, with this is we're really going back to where we were before, um, and it didn't kill the businesses, so. Um, in fact, they continued to thrive. Um, so, so, um.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, uh, and then we also have, uh, direction. I would like to incorporate the further thought on that question, uh, as part of the motion. Uh, Mr. Cole?
So just to be clear, does the motion include option four? No?
No, it's, uh, so the motion.
No, it's, so the motion
Can I, can I read the motion?
Is to adopt option three on the fast-food drive-through businesses prohibiting, prohibiting them from expanding remodeling or rebuilding. And the mayor's request is for staff to look into an amendment to allow businesses to apply for a CUP to access the rights under number four, that would give the council discretion to approve it or not approve it.
I, I don't think I'm, I'm saying, you know, just come back and advise us on what that looks like.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Not, not, not adopt it. I mean, we're not, we're not adopting it now. We're saying, you know, give it some thought and
So we'll do three with the potential to change it.
To amend in the future.
That's the second part of the motion that we bifurcate, right?
No.
Well, what was the bifurcation then, Mayor?
So the bifurcation was the staff recommendation with the addition that prior to the adoption, to the implementation of the ordinance, instruct staff to report to EdTech on opportunities on how to invest into North Lake, and part of it was in coordination with business owners and the other things that were mentioned. That was, that was the
I have the word
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just saying, we should call the question on that motion before turn.
Let's, Mr. Cole, Mr. Cole, what's your motion?
My motion is to adopt the staff recommendation, including the SEQA findings, along with A, that prior to the adoption of the implementation ordinance, that we instruct the city manager to assign appropriate staff to evaluate and bring to EdTech opportunities for early capital operating and grant funding to jumpstart private investment in placemaking and programmatic initiatives under implementation, under the implementation section of the plan. And the second, B, is to adopt measure two, option three, with the staff to come back with potential options that address
The possibility.
The possibility of accommodating future remodeling with greater control over the outcome. And I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's, there's no problem in taking a look. Okay.
So you want to do this, the B part first?
No, I think we can make one motion.
Or you do it all together?
Mayor, are you supporting that?
Yes.
Mayor, that is contrary to what the maker just said. You asked him what his motion was, and he just described two motions, as he said, he acceded to the request that we bifurcate those. And I intend to vote yes on the specific plan on the first motion, but no on option three of the second motion.
Mr. Cole?
I, I'm fine with accommodating Mr. Madison's
Yeah.
request. I just don't know the parliamentary way to do that, and I, I, I'm happy to do that if the city clerk or the city attorney, it seems to me we just say we have a vote now on item B, and
Yeah, right. Now, 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 now you're correct, Mr. Madison. When he says item B, he's just saying the second part of his motion, but it was one motion.
B is three.
Yeah.
Right.
I think the record's clear that there was, the word bifurcation was used, and it wasn't at my request. It was a other council member's request.
Yes.
But that's fine. I think the record's clear what we're doing, and you're the parliamentarian mayor, so
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So let's, let's have
Roll call on B.
Roll call on, on the B, B part of the motion, B motion.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
No.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas is absent. Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
The motion passes, five in favor, one against, two absent.
Oh, thank God. Okay, but then you're going to go to the next part.
So the motion, the motion incorporates A and B and the staff recommendation, and that's what we should vote on now.
Wait, I'm sorry?
The, the motion now before the council incorporates A and B
Correct.
And the staff recommendation.
And the staff recommendation.
Okay. Now it's A and B, one motion, okay?
And that was seconded by Jones as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas is absent, sorry. Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't even know what to say. Well, congratulations, everyone. Thank you for your work, and thank you again to the staff and the community.
Mayor, we still have public comment from the beginning?
Ah, yes.
Two minutes for the speakers to give a comment.
Yes. Ms. Burnt?
Sonia Burnt is first.
Over.
I, I don't know how many people are still remaining, so we'll just go through the names.
You went through a lot for thirty seconds.
Sonia Burnt, followed by Hadad Tarefi, Brittany, James Maddox is in the back, I see him.
Is Councilmember Rivas gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Maddox, if you want to start stepping forward.
Thank you, by the way, for hanging in there with us.
Go ahead, Ms. Burnt.
I listened to the discussion of the All Saints Safe Parking application at last Monday's meeting, and I was stunned that three of you could be so callous and cruel to expose those who would safely park at All Saints to the risk of assault, theft, and citation. What you did was also unlawful. Instead of approving the Safe Parking lifeline, the mayor foisted upon All Saints, a church, the responsibility of figuring out how to repurpose the mayor 305,000. This showed a lack of understanding of the urgency of this matter and the extent of our homelessness emergency. The mayor also said, quote, "We've started the process," unquote, "at looking for alternatives to federal funding for housing for our over 300 unsheltered residents, since that funding is expected to be drastically reduced. That process should have started last May, when the community pleaded with you to consider the drastic cuts before approving the budget." Mr. Hawxworth's May presentation showed the city had $10.6 million in additional revenue received in 2025. Where's that money? The city has a $16.2 million operating reserve this year. In 2020 and 2021, you approved $21.5 million in general fund and general fund reserves to rescue the Rose Bowl. Given that precedent, surely you can rescue our unsheltered residents with general fund reserves. Rabbi Greder told you in September of 2024 that there are motel rooms in Pasadena to provide interim housing for our unsheltered folks, and that friends indeed can provide services. Last December, Councilmember Hampton told staff to agendize that topic at EdTech, but it hasn't been done that entire year, despite multiple pleas from residents. The city has the money and the sites for interim housing. Stop the inordinate delays and stop waiting for someone else's money to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnt.
Hadad Tarefi, I don't see Brittany, I don't see James Maddox.
James Maddox?
Esther Chandler is not here. Is Kabe Niameh here? No?
Mr. Maddox, come on forward. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Who said that?
I did.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is James Maddox, I'm a resident of District Four. My dear daddy used to say, "Do not believe everything you hear, nor what you read." Based on what I've heard and read, last week's council meeting was somewhat vitriolic and was acrimonious. There was a conversation about safe, about housing, safe place, uh, safe parking. There is a program that was created by the New Beginnings Counseling Center in Santa Barbara, and they put together a manual. Oh, lo and behold, a Safe Parking Program Manual. I would encourage that each and every one of you read this. It's 142 pages, and before you start talking about programming and parking for people, have a understanding of what has been put together. You don't have to create the, you don't have to create anything. It's right here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox.
Uh, Esther Chandler's not here, Kabe Niameh's not here, Annette Yesen is not here, Jonathan Ashworth not here, Jasmine Abdullah's not here, Yadi is here, Jose Maria Rios Espada is not here.
Yadi, welcome. Thanks for hanging in with us.
Hi, so I'll start off with commending you guys for taking a, a test this year to try to lower the, the quorum for the committees to be able to take place, because I know that was an issue, and it sounds like that didn't quite work out, but I still appreciate that you guys did the test. However, I do want to point out that in 2025, eight of the 11 Public Safety Committee hearings were canceled, and the last two, November and October, were canceled, and it makes it difficult, not only for the public to weigh in on public safety-related matters, but also for staff. So in the summer, there were, I was sitting in the back with half a dozen staff that was here for two meetings that were canceled in a row, and that's not a very good use of resources. And I'm having to find the time to come to a finance committee or a policy committee to talk about public safety issues, and so I'd like the council to consider other ways to address these issues, either by consolidating committees or figuring out some other way, because it's not really useful to have a Public Safety Committee meeting that doesn't actually meet, especially in the year where we had the, the most devastating event in the city's history. And the one-minute meeting, one-minute comment period at the beginning of these meetings is very difficult, and it's very rushed, and it's hard to even get out a complete thought on one subject. And I do appreciate that you guys gave us the time at the end of the meeting, but here we are at 10 o'clock, and I do want to talk about other issues like trees, but I find myself making only complete, I mean, partially complete statements and sentences, so thank you.
Thank you. The, let me, the rationale for, given effect the council's longstanding rule of 20 minutes is, you know, when the public is here for agendized matters, it's, and to comment on the agendized business of the city, it's important to give them an opportunity to do that. And what we were finding is, public comment for matters not on the agenda was encroaching onto agendized matters that are going to be, in some cases, final action of the council. So that's the rationale. But I, I get the, I get your points, too. Thank you.
Jill Shook, who is online?
Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I want to say that I appreciate the decision you made to approve the contract with Showers of Hope and Safe Parking, but I am puzzled about your decision to reject this application for reasons that really don't make sense legally or spiritually. SB 1361 is a law that provides an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for contracts related to providing services for people experiencing homelessness. This bill was signed by the governor on August 19, 2024, and it took effect January 1st of this year. Based on this, SB 1361, I believe that what took place at the city council last Monday regarding Safe Parking was illegal. It should, it could be that our city is just not aware of that state policy, and, but I, I think very seriously the decision needs to be revisited. So now that you know that this policy exists, it would behoove you to be in compliance with the law to allow Safe Parking at All Saints. As a city, we will ultimately make account for how we treat the most vulnerable in our city, and I personally cannot sit idly by as a resident of Pasadena without reminding you of the importance of prioritizing our residents experiencing homelessness. Indeed, it is not only a legal requirement, also a higher truth that we must uphold. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan York is not online. That leaves Michael Cannavan as the last speaker.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak ahead. I want to say I'm extremely disappointed, excuse me, in last week's city council vote to deny the MCU CUP to All Saints Church for Safe Parking. It was only two years ago that the city council amended the zoning code to allow Safe Parking at religious sites and commercial zones, and only a year ago that the city authorized the funding for this specific project. Last week's vote not only deprives these 25 individuals of safety and comfort now, it sends the message that we are not a reliable partner in solving the homelessness crisis, and that we feel that the crisis is ultimately not our responsibility. I was disturbed last week by the sense that we were debating doing a favor to All Saints in the Shower of Hope by allowing them to operate a Safe Parking facility. In fact, they are doing a favor to us by giving their time, energy, and land to protect these people the city has decided it can't.
I don't know.
I, I agree that Safe Parkers deserve a place inside, but they can't wait for us to shuffle funds around and study a way to help them, especially when we know the authorized money isn't enough to fund an indoor shelter. In the meantime, they're still out there, and they're still vulnerable, and they're still missing out on opportunities to be connected with permanent housing, like 17 participants in Trinity's program already have. Please reconsider this decision, approve the SEQA exemption, and allow these 25 individuals living in their cars a night's rest. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comment on matters not on the agenda. I unfortunately have to say that we had a procedural issue, and we didn't close the public hearing, so we need to take a motion to close the public on North Lake. I'm sorry.
Specific plan.
It's the item that won't go away, so I'm sorry. We do need to close
Your, your motion was deficient, Mr. Cole.
Masuda, Councilmember Masuda made the motion.
It was premature.
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hampton, roll call for closing.
Questions?
Uh, Councilmember Cole to close the hearing?
I want to bifurcate.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon is absent. Councilmember Madison?
Just bifurcated or is it?
It is.
Just kidding. Just kidding.
Closes, yes. Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas is absent, and Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed unanimously. Do we need to take a second motion, or are we good?
We're good.
We're good.
We're substantial in compliance.
There's a, Mr. Madison has his hand raised, and Mr. Hampton is in the queue.
Only if the meeting's concluded, Mark and Mayor.
We've completed all the items on the agenda.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention, Mayor, that I have asked the city attorney to review for me how we can bring the, the All Saints matter back to the council. I was, because of a travel fiasco, which involved me being in the air for like six-plus hours on an hour-long flight, I was not present. I was disappointed that there was an effort to continue the matter until the full council could pass on it, but be that as it may, you know, I'm concerned about the process, and I, I want an opportunity to participate in that, that matter, so I look forward to either having the mayor agendize it once we get advice from the city attorney, or formally requesting that of my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hampton? This week is the, the week of Thanksgiving, and I just wanted to give an opportunity. I got an email today from a resident that, you know, just shared about her pleasantries with city staff, and she's a senior, or she, as she mentioned in her email, she was a senior, she did not know how to put a car seat in a, in her car. She went to the fire department. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to get into the fire department or someone, no one was able to help. And she just saw a city worker on the side of the road, and she asked him, did he know how to put a car seat in the car? Now, I'm sure that that's probably not a legal requirement or something that he should probably not done, but, and I'm not going to mention the individual's name, because I don't want to get him in trouble, but he said, "I'm a father, and I, of course, know how to put a car seat in a car," and how to put a car seat in the car and, and he helped her out so that they could take a, a long trip and made sure that it was secure. The resident shared this with me in an email and I just wanted to say that not just for that city staff member, but all of our city staff members, they go above and beyond the work that they are tasked to do. And I just want to say that I am grateful for them, but in, in most in particular, I am grateful for all of the city management in this council as a whole. We don't always agree on everything, but I am ultimately grateful for each and every one of you guys. God bless you guys, love you guys, and I hope that you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you. I couldn't say it any better, Mr. Hampton. Thank you to all of you for your work and to the staff and the public. Thank you.
I would add my sentiments to Mr. Hampton and the mayor and particularly in addition to the staff, which you mentioned, this is my first year and I am deeply grateful for my colleagues around this dais as well as the city staff because, again, you mentioned we don't always agree, but it has been a real heartening experience for someone who's had a lot of experience working with elected officials over the years to, despite all the criticism that we all take, we all are looking for what's best for Pasadena and I'm deeply grateful to all of you. President is as well as absent tonight.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Likewise, thank you, everyone.
Likewise, thank you, everyone. So we will stand in the German.